This special session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 22, 2025, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Ann Kramer. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll?
Director Barlow. Treasurer Cook.
Here.
Director Flacklin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Director Whitehorn.
Here.
Vice Chair Wood.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/assembly. Our next agenda item is an action item, the approval of the Long Term Facilities Maintenance Plan. The Board reviewed this item under prep for action at the July 15 meeting. I'll read the resolution, ask for motion and second, and if received, we'll open the floor for additional information and discussion. It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 10-year Long Term Facilities Maintenance Plan for the school year 2026-2027.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
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 Opposed? The resolution has been approved. And hearing no other business, this special session is adjourned at 5:33 PM. This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:33 PM on Tuesday, July 22, 2025, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Ann Kramer. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll?
Director Barlow. Treasurer Cook.
Here.
Director Flacklin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Director Whitehorn.
Here.
Vice Chair Wood.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available at RochesterSchools.org/assembly. Our first item tonight is a focus topic, Facilities Strategy. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to start out by welcoming Mike Stock, who is our new Director of Facilities, working in the Office of Administration. Mike, many of you may previously know, was our health and safety guru, and is somebody who has known our physical infrastructure well. We had some wonderful applicants for his position, which we created as part of the reorganization that you approved this summer, so it's great to see you, Mike, and looking forward to your leadership. I'm going to turn it over to John to give the Board an overview, but just briefly to frame the difference between the action that you just took in special session and the discussion we're having now in study session. The Long Term Facilities Maintenance Plan, of course, as you well know, is required for all school districts, and that has to be updated by the end of this month. And there are significant constraints, as John described at your last meeting, with what those dollars can be spent for. Those dollars do not cover all of the physical infrastructure needs of a school district like ours. And so in talking with the Chair and Vice Chair, we decided to closely schedule but separate the LTFM plan review and approval from a longer-term strategy discussion of our facilities. The overview that John is going to give you tonight is truly for discussion purposes, starting with the School Board, and then certainly extending to other stakeholders in the early fall. And then we will work with the Chair and Vice Chair to put decisions on the Board calendar over the year ahead as we begin to move forward. We're not, of course, asking for action at a study session, but we want your ideas and your input. We've been working on this as one of our key initiatives throughout the current school year, and I think the final point that I would make, and as you can expect, I'll be jumping into John's presentation at some key moments, as I want to do. This was a much more ambitious plan when we started, meaning larger reorganization of learning spaces tied to both educational purposes and the office space. As our enrollment projection and our financial realities have become clearer, even including the passage of the 2024 referendum, we have gotten more practical, pragmatic, and limited. And so we are going to give you an overview of what I see as a limited number of strategic decisions about facilities that I will recommend, I believe, that you take over the course of the remainder of the calendar year 2025, such that these decisions would be made by the end of the calendar year. But even though they're more limited than I was thinking about when we started this, they're not insignificant. There are some significant shifts in our physical infrastructure here, some of which would move us out of a longstanding and well-known facility, another of which would significantly upgrade a facility that serves arguably the highest need students in our district. So with that, I'll turn it over to John. He's going to break it down by building, and then we will turn it over to your questions and reactions tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Superintendent Pecel. Chair Nathan, it's my pleasure to be here with Mike as the Director of Facilities to give you some insight into some work we've been doing over the last school year and some recommendations that ultimately the Superintendent, as he said, will make to you more formally in a future session. So first off, some goals that we are trying to address through the conversation that we're starting tonight. First, we want to make sure that our educational and our operational spaces fit the needs of our students first, and then our staff second. We, as we've been talking about declining enrollment and our projections into the future, we do believe that our physical space should adjust to that reality as well, meaning we should have or could have less space and free up less fixed costs. And that's really point number three, aligning to appropriate spaces, improving our financial efficiency, and looking out as best we can for future needs. So let me talk about the Fridell Building first. I took that picture off of Google Maps a couple weeks ago. It was kind of strategic, the angle that I took, because I wanted you to see a couple points in that. First, you're at a major intersection here. You're at the most traveled intersection in all of Rochester, Broadway and Highway 14, where they intersect. You've got the county, which owns property right to the east of us there. That's signified by the corn tower in the picture. And then you've got other properties that are next door to us that are in need of upkeep and redevelopment as well. So the picture is trying to capture a couple different things there for you. Current uses of Fridell. So first off, the Rochester Academy for Independent Living. This is a special education facility. It's a setting four, I believe, and it is primarily for our learners who are 18 to 21 years old, who are working on transitioning into adulthood, but they have not graduated officially from Rochester Public Schools yet. It is also the site of the Middle School Alternative Learning Center. We used to call that the Middle School Right Fit Program through the 23-24 school year, and then upon your approval of a middle school ALC, that became the home in the last school year. And then finally, it is the gymnasium that we are using for our high school gymnastics program right now. Current estimate of number of students involved in gymnastics is approximately 25 students across all three of our comprehensive high schools. Fridell has some strengths. It is a facility that has a relatively decent commercial kitchen, a relatively new gymnasium, and it's well-located near public transportation. What's shifting over time in that area is the city of Rochester's plan to make that a much more walkable, transit-oriented destination. So what that means in practicality is, is the city foresees down the road, that being a place of redevelopment where things are very walkable, and it looks different from what it does today. And then Umside County, as I mentioned, has been acquiring property to both either redevelop and/or expand to the Grand Park area surrounding Fridell. There are challenges with Fridell, though. The most obvious one is if you've been to Fridell, you know that the older part of the building, so the 1960s portion of the building, is in dire need of deferred maintenance. And that includes mechanical, plumbing, electrical, and surface upgrades. And so if we are to keep that building, we know that at current cost, it's about $14 million. I call that the minimum, because as we get into it, sometimes prices rise as we find more problems, as we start pulling things apart. But $14 million of upgrades would be needed to just keep it maintained and get it back to like-new condition. One thing that we did not add after we passed the 2019 referendum was a secure entry. We kind of started to know at that time, the future of Fridell was uncertain, and so we did not take time to put extra cost into the building and put that secure entrance on. Another issue is outdoor green space has been an issue. So prior to when Fridell Middle School was operated there, we actually leased land at, from the county nearby, so students had to walk to get to their green space down the road. I think it's a common misunderstanding that the grass right at the corner of that busy intersection is not Fridell property. That is actually state of Minnesota property, and so really, we've been granted an access easily to use that from the state of Minnesota, but that's not our actual lawn there, even though we are maintaining it as such. And then, as mentioned before, we have neighbors nearby that are in various stages of redevelopment needed. And so I think there is some good news in that the Denny's was on the market, off the market, on the market. I think it's off the market again, but potentially being redeveloped as another restaurant type of property there. One big thing, and this is the week of the fair, and so when there are big activities there, it is difficult to access Fridell. And so that, Jackie could probably speak to that, that it's not a very convenient week to be over at Fridell or trying to get in and out of Fridell right now.
Pretty easy to convince the people that take your parking money that you're really not going to the fair, you're going to Fridell. But you do have to stop and explain that.
Part of our work this last school year is we went out, we met with both of the principals or assistant principals that operate the two programs mentioned there and got their feedback. And there are positives from their perspective. Rail values, the spacious bathrooms, the cooking facilities, the carpeted floors, and proximity to transit. Those are actually, in their mind, very beneficial to the program that they're operating, transitioning students to adulthood. The middle school ALC, they've been able to expand. They've really grown into that building. They have plenty of space to do their rental health support, science labs, community services, and, as mentioned, some of that green space isn't technically our green space, but they are using it for some limited movement activities outside. So this is the recommendation that the Superintendent will likely make to you. We feel it is best to move Rail and the middle school ALC out of this property, and we feel it's best to list the property for sale. When discussions with a local realtor who represents our district in transactions, he's estimating a list price of approximately $3.6 to $4.4 million. So I think probably the question that would be on people's minds is where would you potentially move Rail and middle school ALC? And so that one, I'm going to punt or turn over to the Superintendent if you'd like to comment on that.
Thanks. No, we know that it's important. We, it's not fair to even raise an issue like this without giving you a sense of what we think the best possibility is, but there's much more analysis to be done. The Rail program, which is, as John said, older students with disabilities, and our middle school ALC, middle school kids who are really doing quite well in a very small structured setting, distinct from our larger traditional middle schools, work very well together. And so the starting point for the analysis that we would be conducting in the outreach early in the fall is keeping them together, because it actually has been, without any negative incidents, and with quite a few positive interactions. And we've had leaders that have really embraced being co-located. They haven't done programming that has been coordinated, but it has gone well. And so our sense is that, given, as John said at the outset, the urgent, urgent need that we face to maximize space given declining enrollment, we'd be looking for a facility where they could be co-located. The most likely possibility for that is in one of our two elementary school buildings that is actually significantly undersubscribed in terms of enrollment, and those two are Sunset Terrace Engage right now. And so those are two schools that, if we do nothing tied to enrollment patterns and attendance boundaries, are likely to remain significantly underutilized. And so we would look at moving Rail and middle school ALC together into one of those buildings, appropriately located. As John mentioned, bus access is a big part of the Rail program for those young adults getting some of those life skills, so we would consider that. And then replicating the strategy we've used successfully with Longfellow and Pinewood of housing two independent elementary schools in the same building. As we learned slightly more than two years ago, we need to do the math. We have done the initial math about that prospect. We believe it could work in the right facility, but of course, we know that that's something that requires input and would be significantly changed. Those two schools are also relatively close to each other geographically, but if we took that step, it would require the redistribution of some students who attend those schools to other schools, which actually may be closer to their homes. That when the attendance boundaries were drawn, and this, as you all know, predates me, but I was somewhat surprised to learn that, or just given the numbers of kids that were in some of our elementary buildings at that time, we have some students traveling further from what might be Gibbs Elementary, for instance, to get to one of those schools than we actually might otherwise need to have. And the, you know, I'm going to be a broken record in the next few months saying, how do we make an opportunity of declining enrollment wherever we can, even as we work to increase enrollment? And there are some opportunities. We are not bursting at the seams in most of our elementary schools like we were when those decisions were made. So there would be some limited reassignment of students. We did that successfully in this school year as we implemented our start times. I think we've learned that if we are very transparent and collaborative with families, and we make sure they know that the school option they're being reassigned to is a great one and has wonderful programming options, I think it's never easy, but we've learned how to do that. And it would be, again, a very limited number of students, and you would need to do that because the kids have to fit in that combined building. So right now, that would be the working theory, co-location of two elementary schools and co-location of Rail and middle school ALC in their areas. So I thought, as John and I were chatting, it's important that I tell you that that is our best working theory, and we would have time and, of course, the commitment to do our homework on the degree to which that would be an effective strategy. I gave a lot of thought to keeping Fridell. I love the idea of this building, geographically located it where it is. I was at a meeting today with community leaders sponsored by Destination Medical Center, as John alluded to. They have pretty exciting and grandiose plans for that part of the city, but they're all far off. They're, none of them are immediate, let me get out the checkbook and take Fridell. And when you look at a building that is maybe $3.6 million, that needs a basement bottom $14 million upgrade, that has got very limited parking options for us to expand it, there's a real issue there. The second issue that I wanted to highlight before I turn it back to John to finish our walk through these buildings is the gym at Fridell has been our only option for gymnastics. And our gymnastics program, I cannot say is thriving in terms of numbers, but it has seen an uptick in the last couple of years. And of course, we love providing extracurricular opportunities to all students. We do not have currently another viable space for gymnastics. One of the hard realities, and I know Board members have gotten emails about this, is that when we have had gymnastics in the gym at Fridell, that's not equipment that you can just roll up every day after practice. And so we have, for months at a time, had our students in two programs where the kids need a lot of support, without access to a gym. And many families and others and staff at Rail and middle school ALC have described this as a deep equity issue. We also have had nowhere else to do gymnastics. We've looked at community settings, we've looked at other space elsewhere. So that's another issue that we will have to grapple with while we move forward with this. We know that a neighboring district had to end gymnastics, be it based on enrollment and challenges with finding gym space. That obviously is not my preferred option. I think it's important for Board members to know that were we to do that, we would still be in compliance with federal Title IX requirements in terms of the number of girls' sports that we offer. So we would be able to do that, should we so choose. And we really have done our due diligence, looking for gym space of the kind that you could allocate either permanently or for months at a time for gymnastics, and we thus far have come up short. And so there is a point where we have to accept that most of our decisions in the next years ahead are going to be trade-offs and hard calls. And so that gymnastics piece is something that does also loom in this conversation. But I wanted to add that context, or subtext maybe, and then I think I'll turn it back to John. You can walk through the rest, and then we can return to this subject or anything else that you're thinking about.
Great. Thank you. Educational Services Center, located on 16th Street Southeast. That's a picture. The cones were not from this year, but it kind of describes what Rochester feels like driving around right now, cones everywhere. The facade of that building is a material, I believe, is called EIFS, and I'm forgetting exactly what that acronym stands for, but that is in disrepair and also needs work. And so we actually do have work at this building scheduled on our Long Term Facility Maintenance Plan that you just approved, to deal with that, deal with roofs, deal with windows, those types of normal long-term facility maintenance things you need to do to keep a building operating into the future. But that visual, I think, helps describe, and you would really see it if you went up close to the building, some of the issues that we need to deal with at that building. So how do we use ESC, as we sometimes call it here? Today, we have Phoenix Academy over there. That is, again, is another special education setting four program. We have our care and treatment program, so there are a couple residential facilities. It's not called Von Wald anymore. I'm blanking on the name. I think it's like 180 or something like that. They drive the students that are staying there, because that's within our district boundaries, over to the ESC building. We have a couple classrooms there where we provide education for those students within our boundaries. And then we also have our district's curriculum warehouse in the middle of the building, which stores materials and supplies for our teachers and other educators' use. Strengths of the ESC facility. One, it does include a secure entrance. That is something that was done after the last referendum. It has a wood shop that the students use over there. That was an addition that we put on a few years back, once we moved the printing center out of there. And there are appropriate seclusion rooms that we've invested heavily in at that facility. It does lack a kitchen and a gym. It also is surrounded by railroad tracks and other industrial properties, so it is relatively boxed in, and sometimes the neighborhood, while I think they are very accepting of the students and staff at Phoenix Academy, sometimes we get comments about where Phoenix Academy is located, just because of the surroundings around there. We believe that the kitchen and gym are issues that we can deal with if we're looking at this as a bigger picture, which we'll talk about here in a moment. Again, in our stakeholder feedback, when we went and met with the principal at Phoenix Academy, they expressed a desire to remain at this facility. We looked at other options, at where could we put this program that might be a different space for them, might be deemed as an upgrade to them, and actually, there was a strong preference to actually stay in this space, that it has been developed really nice for them on the inside, minus the kitchen and gym issue that we need to address, but they really want to actually stay in this facility. One thing we would have to deal with is the curriculum warehouse. So if we were to deal with the gym and the kitchen issue, we believe we have to deal with the curriculum warehouse issue at the same time. So our recommendation for ESC is to, no surprise, since it's on the Long Term Facility Maintenance Plan you just approved, but to invest in the work that we already have planned, to do those infrastructure upgrades to the exterior of the building and maintain it soundly for the years ahead. Repurpose the curriculum warehouse space into a gym or a movement area, and install a commercial kitchen. Permanently rename the building to Phoenix Academy, so instead of calling it the Educational Services Center and then having Phoenix Academy at ESC, we just rename it ESC. And then we do know that we need to have some further evaluation of the care and treatment program and the Students with Unique Needs program. It's kind of a subdivision of Phoenix Academy. It may or may not be appropriate to keep the SUN program in that facility, but that's something that we need more engagement with the staff and leadership of that school before we can make that call.
So thanks, John. Just to be sure all Board members know, a setting four facility is a federally authorized designation for a facility for kids who cannot be well-served in a traditional facility, requiring much smaller class sizes and specific configurations of the rooms, often involving bathrooms, sometimes seclusion rooms, which we use in very authorized and controlled ways when kids are dysregulated. We regularly have kids in the district who need to be in a setting four facility, who sometimes themselves, but frequently their parents or caregivers don't want to go to what is really a very wonderful program because it looks terrible. I would not say that it's nice. I would say it's functional, that, and they have said, they've said it's functional. We've never spent money to actually make Phoenix Academy look good, which we've done. And so there would be cosmetic improvements that I think are very meaningful, especially as you're a parent considering sending your child to a facility that, up till now, never had a kitchen, never had a gym, and was not designed, in the way that many of our other buildings have been, to be aesthetically pleasing without breaking the bank. We're not going to actually try and make it look like a luxury resort. But even the outside exterior that John was pointing out, it doesn't look good, and people draw conclusions from that. Our neighbors there, who, as John mentioned, have been very good neighbors, they do have barbed wire around their businesses. That's their prerogative. I don't think it's about our kids. It's about, you know, security. One of the questions I've said is, are there some ways we can change the sightlines so that when you're walking into Phoenix, or you're at least in the parking lot, you're not seeing the barbed wire that is on the neighboring properties? So I do want to highlight, I think there are some targeted aesthetic improvements that we should make there. that we should make there. I want to thank Mona and her team for the positive response they gave when I said, "I want that warehouse out of there. I don't care if we have to put it under my desk," because those kids urgently need a space to move, and they have had nothing in that space. And I also think they need a kitchen. Now, the cost of the kitchen is something we're really going to have to work on, because a full commercial kitchen there has got, and of course, I'm out of my depths here, but there's major plumbing work that has to be done. But, if you talk to the kids, as I've done, and staff, and our food service has done the best they can to bring the food in, but it's cold hot dogs for some of our kids in the highest needs situation. And our nutrition services in the last year and a half or so has worked really hard to enhance that, but it's still not that space. So, I personally consider it a moral imperative to improve that facility. And I think you all know, if you don't, you should. Rob Scripture, who is just an extraordinary leader, you know, I've said to Rob, "Rob, you've made do long enough. We need to come in." And John's right, there are major improvements like the shop and things like that, that they've made great use of. I think that this is a targeted opportunity to invest in the equity agenda in the district for our kids that are the highest needs in the system. So, this is one that I want to, and board members will remember that you approved the withholding of a targeted $6 million fund for future facilities and technology upgrades when you approved the financial strategy. Those dollars would pay for the non-LTFM aspects of this project. And so, we know that in this budgetary environment, we don't take any investment lightly, but I really do believe that this is an imperative. As John mentioned, we really looked for other facilities around the community where we could relocate this program, and somewhat to my surprise, I came away not only like okay with keeping it there, but actually pretty excited about it if we put in place some of these improvements to strengthen it. So, thanks for letting me, you know, jump in with this one. I know you know that it's one I feel pretty strongly about.
Yep. All right. Mighty Oaks. So, Mighty Oaks is out on 50th Avenue Southeast. That's a current picture as a couple of weeks ago. As you know, that school has officially had their last class go through there as of the end of the last school year, and we are in process of picking them up and moving them to the former Pinewood Elementary School here in a couple of weeks, so that they can launch the new school year there. So, we have this facility sitting there, and we have some commentary about that too. So, as mentioned, we're going to be out of there, we're going to schedule to do the move shortly after August 1st. It is a wonderfully built early learning school. It has a great playground, age-appropriate fixtures throughout the building. Our biggest challenge with this property has been convincing parents to put their kids there, because of the remote location and it being actually closer to other school districts rural beyond the Rochester Public School lines than it actually is to our own school buildings within our boundaries. So, where it's located has definitely been an issue for us to deal with. We recommend that we actually step out of this facility, that we put it on the market. This isn't a surprise to a couple of board members who were here 15-ish years ago, when it was put on the market back then, but then deemed it could be reutilized. We think that the current value of that building is approximately $600,000 to $800,000. I think it'd be a great childcare center, or it even could be worked into Marion Township. So, those are some of the conversations we want to have with people if you were to act upon this recommendation. Skyline. This picture also is as of a couple of weeks ago. You cannot find a picture of this building on Google Maps. The Google Cars don't go down this street or this driveway, I don't believe. This was a school that has been around, but it has been vacant since 1976. In the mid-1970s, the school district was also dealing with a declining enrollment situation. And in around 1976, I believe, Horace Mann, Skyline, Bandell, and Orinoco Schools were all closed around the same time period because of declining enrollment and consolidation was happening at that time, too. Since that time, this building has sat there for almost 50 years now. It's been primarily just used for storage, although there is not much in there at this point. We believe that its value is in redevelopment, that that would make a perfect site for adding on to the residential neighborhood that already exists in the area there. This building, if you would like to meet me out there sometime for a tour, you would find that there are no utilities. The windows are boarded up. There are structural deficiencies. The building likely cannot be continued to be used. So, that is just a way of saying, I think it probably is going to end up being torn down by whoever has this property in the future. So, our recommendation, or the superintendent is going to recommend to you, that we also put this one on the market. This one has a kind of a wide price point, because it really depends if it's sold to a residential developer, it's going to be on the low end. If there were a possibility to have it upzoned and make it more of a commercial or industrial type of property, the value does increase. So, we're going to have to have some conversations about what is the type of listing that we want to portray there. Okay, where we sit right now, Edison. So, in the middle of the historic southwest neighborhood is where we sit in a school building that has been converted to a central office facility. We know that we can squeeze up to about 120 people into this building by stuffing multiple desks in offices, and we've made it work. It's not an ideal office location, but it does work and it is, has value for the district in that it is at least centrally located. Our issue with this building is that it was built in 1915, so it's 110 years old. It is our oldest property that exists right now on our books, and we also have $12 million of deferred maintenance here. We don't have a secure entry. We also chose not to do that at the time of following the referendum, as we were trying to decide what's the long-term future of this building. We do believe that visitor access here is somewhat confusing, and that would be something that if we're going to keep it, that we would try to improve and make a meaningful but limited investment into trying to improve access to this building. We've done a lot of legwork on this one. We have looked at alternative office spaces in our community, either for sale or for lease, so where could we put 120 employees elsewhere? There are options out there. There are places for sale, there are places for lease. We're having, we are struggling with finding where's that centrally located space where 120 people could have offices, and also not be so central that now we have to start paying for parking, in other words, being right in the core of downtown. So, there's just a lot of moving parts, a lot of issues with this. We've also spoken to the city of Rochester, because you may not know, but this was a residential neighborhood. This is zoned residential. We're not even really supposed to have an office building here. You can have schools in residential zones, but you can't have offices. So, there's going to be some reckoning at some point, if this building is going to be something different other than a Rochester Public School building, that it might not even meet the zoning requirements at that point. So, we've engaged in discussions about what could be the future of this property. It is right on the line, that other side of the street right out there is zoned a little bit higher, meaning it can be denser than what this property is. So, there'd be, have to be some discussion about, could that zoning move over here? Because that would actually improve the value of this land if it were to be sold at some point for redevelopment into some sort of housing. So, that's just a long way of saying that, right now, our recommendation is to continue using this building as is and try to defer as much maintenance as we can while we continue to explore options. We don't have the smoking gun option, so to speak, for right now on what to do with this building, other than a few limited but meaningful upgrades that we could make to improve visitor access, especially those families new to our district who are coming to register or enroll in our district. That's point number two that I had there. Would you like to make any commentary on this one, Superintendent?
No, just to amplify that last point. I do think we need to invest in the space that families use to enroll their kids down the hall. If you've been in the building, you see little kids, there's two little chairs to sit, there's a window that people come to. We can, in a cost-effective way, improve that space for registration. We looked at other, you know, options to deal with the entrances and things like that, and I think we probably need to stay here for a while until another preferable option comes up, but the family registration space is, I think, a really urgent, urgent need. And so, that would be something that we'd put on the list for the very near future.
All right. A property that most people have driven by many times, but have probably never realized it's a Rochester Public School property. This is what I call the former DNR property. So, this is at the corner of RCTC and right across from the athletic complex, so we're the, what would be the football stadium essentially. We own the lot right across the street from there. It's vacant land, 17 acres near RCTC. The biggest challenge we're going to have with this property, and why probably we haven't done anything with it, is access is limited and development is constrained by deed restrictions and traffic regulations. So, what I mean by that is I think our biggest challenge is ever going to be actually getting a driveway into our property. It's too close to the major stoplight there. And so, whenever you have properties by stoplights, they're trying to make driveways and accesses far enough away from that, so you don't create accidents trying to get in and out of the property in conflict with traffic signals. That means the workaround to that is probably going to be accessed through neighborhoods, which aren't, one of them is not even developed yet. So, we're trying to work with the landlord and the property owner there, who has ideas for developing into apartments to the northeast of this property, and going through a developed neighborhood directly to the east of this property. Again, I think that's going to be challenging to figure out what's the right type of RPS program or school site to put there in the future. At this point, this property costs us nothing. We don't do anything to maintain it. We're not in trouble with anybody for not maintaining it. It's sitting there, it's vacant land. I think the right strategy is to hold it. We really can't sell it. If we decide we never want to do anything with it, the deed restriction is we have to give it back to the state of Minnesota. So, they would take it back at that point and do something else with it. So, it's not really land that we can speculate on and say, "Well, we'll sell that off for luxury condos at some point." That's not going to happen.
Other than the traffic restriction, is there anything else in the deed restrictions that makes it difficult to develop? It's mostly just an access issue?
It has to be with a public purpose. So, perhaps like Rochester Public Schools could work with RCTC or City of Rochester, Olmsted County, and jointly, we could come up with some sort of public purpose for that property. That's kind of how the deed restriction reads. And then finally, we have Shannon Oaks property. So, this is a picture taken off of Google Maps. Those trees, I think, unfortunately died in the last year and were removed this week. So, they were ash trees. But, this is on 21st Street Northeast. We sometimes call this the Century property or the Water Tower property, but it's a nice parcel sitting there that was reserved when Shannon Oaks was developed and meant for a future RPS facility, TDD on what that would be and when that would be. But, it has been held for 20-plus years at this point. So, it's good vacant land. It's a 13-acre site. It's near Century. It's a desirable neighborhood. It's got a seven-acre park right next door to it. That works very well for school and city to have parks side by side. We handle that well at Overland, Gibbs, other properties. So, we're both parties agreed to do certain things and mutually maintain the land. So, the recommendation on this one is continue to hold it, other than some maintenance. Mike's team goes up there and had to deal with those trees. We have to mow it a few times a year, but I think it's a good hold for the future, for a future elementary school, should our enrollment picture change, or development patterns change, or we need to replace an old aging elementary school at some point. I think that's a good strategy to sit and hold on this property for a future use. Two more items that we just wanted to mention that, and maybe Superintendent, we didn't exactly talk about this one online before the meeting here, but we know that our leases on the RCTC campus for P-Tech and C-Tech programs are coming due on June 30th of the year ahead. And so, we are beginning some exploratory conversations with leaders internally about relocating the career and technical programs back to RPS sites. So, that's with the express purpose of, one, saving money on leases that we're paying to RCTC, and two, really encouraging those programs to grow within the high schools and solving some of our operational and transportation issues of pulling all of our kids to a centralized location for those types of classes. And then, another issue with that is we would need to find a home office or a home location for our Minsync online school. The current designated home office for Minsync is actually on the C-Tech or in the C-Tech building. So, if we were to end that lease, we do need to think about where do we put the Minsync office staff and leadership team. I think that gets us to the end of the prepared, and then it's open for discussion and conversation.
Yeah, I'll just say a little bit on the P-Tech/C-Tech piece, because for some in our community, there may be a question, "Well, what does this mean when you have a strategy to prepare more kids to earn post-secondary credentials and degrees?" The P-Tech and C-Tech facilities are on the RCTC campus, but no kids in either program work with RCTC faculty through that program. They're all with RPS staff. And with, I met with Brandon McCraffick, who oversees both programs, as well as our online school today. There is no facility that they use that doesn't or couldn't exist in one of our traditional high schools. They are not gaining access to lab space or other space that is uniquely situated in a higher institution. So, we're busing kids across town, and in addition to the impact that it has on kids not being able to walk by, you know, the facility in their high school and decide to take the class, plus the transportation cost, plus the rent, we build the schedules of our comprehensive high schools around moving several hundred kids across the city and back every day, and it has a huge impact on what we can do with scheduling in our schools. I've shared with Dr. Jeff Boyd, the president of RCTC, that we need to take a look at this. He and I went over and looked at the space. They actually are looking for good space for some of their educational priorities. So, this is something that will have to be handled with real skill, because it's not, should we choose to recommend this to you, it would not be backing off of our desire to have more kids in post-secondary credit-earning classes and career and technical fields especially. It would be bringing those back into the high schools, and it would not be backing off on our partnership with RCTC on PSEO and other functions. PSEO classes are separate from P-Tech and C-Tech. P-Tech kids take PSEO once they finish the courses taught by RPS teachers, but they would continue to do that. And so, that's, actually, once they're doing that, they're an RCTC student in the RCTC program. So, that's a real issue. The origins of our being in the Hind Center on the RCTC campus were, you know, a public investment in creating that space. We're also confident that we have met that test of time and that the facility's been paid for, and that RCTC would continue to be using that for a similar, very positive public community interested purpose. But, once again, that is going to be, like many of the issues we've talked about tonight, complex. We have more homework to do, and we want to be really clear that nobody who either is watching or hears about this confuses that possibility with us backing off on our commitment to have more kids earning college credit while they're in high school and entering fields that are often called, what we used to call, VOTEC or Career and Technical Fields. So, with that, Madam Chair, that concludes our overview of this set of issues that we're going to be eager to hear your questions and thoughts about.
Yeah, this is all, all really helpful in its useful framing. I was wondering, just as we're talking about the Rail Program, the Middle School ALC Program, and the Phoenix Academy, was there any, one of the things that my mind went to, especially as we're talking about the open lots, was there any thought given to the possibility of building a facility for those three programs in particular? I don't know that they would necessarily work well co-located, but is that something that was analyzed and ruled out for one reason or another? I- that was analyzed and ruled out for one reason or another? Not sure, just curious if there was any thought given to that.
Yes, we've, we talked about that. I think some challenges are, how do you fund that? We know that we can use our lease levy authority in dealing and talking with our financial advisors and talking about like, what's the potential cost to get the square footage we roughly would need. We don't know that we have enough authority presently in Minnesota state statute to do that without possibly having to do something creative either through legislation, which could be done, or through some sort of voter-approved referendum again. And so at this point, we didn't bring that forward as the main recommendation, but it was considered.
Recommendations on the effect of Mighty Oaks, Skyline and DSC, I think make a lot of sense. I'm interested in the recommendations of the CTEC program, and I love the idea of having labs at high schools for kids to be able to attend. My question is, for some of the labs that exist at CTEC, like the welding program, the commercial kitchen, can't, I don't think you can, it would be costly to have those kinds of labs in all high schools. So would that, I mean, maybe it is possible, I don't know if the space exists, but would that limit kids' options, you know, if you're a John Marshall kid and you want to take a welding class, but it's that male?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Marvin. It's interesting because actually the welding space our kids are using is not ours, it's RCTC's. And they actually are kicking us out of it because their program's growing so fast in the future. And so that's the one area in which we might have, and we do have, you know, welding bays in our high schools. That's one area in which we might have some physical infrastructure. Interestingly, in the commercial kitchen that is at CTEC, we own all of that equipment. So it's RPS-owned. And so there would potentially be the possibility of relocating it. Now, we have homework to do to actually see if that actually is viable. But that would be, there's nothing special about that room that has it. I, as board members I know are aware, I've been pulling together key issues that are going to be a subject of the board's discussion at its retreat on the next strategic plan in August. And very prominent in that list is a major investment in curricular pathways that lead to post-secondary education and careers in our middle schools and especially high schools. Should we embrace that strategy through our strategic plan, I think we would have a very exciting and ambitious, comprehensive effort to strengthen those kinds of pathways within our comprehensive high schools and the ALC. And so we would have a bigger initiative on our hands to bring that programming back into the high schools. As part of that strategy, we would need to ask which programs should exist in every school and which programs should be open to kids to travel across schools. There's travel that is supported and provided by the district, which we certainly do in some instances. We also have a real issue with quite a few of our buses going empty with high school kids who are getting to our buildings themselves. And so I think there's a possibility of saying, if we can't afford to have, for instance, the kind of welding facility that really prepares kids to enter the field at all of our schools, can we transport students from our high schools to the high school that can maintain that facility? Or can students self-transport for the purposes of that class? And so that's the kind of thing we would have to answer. If we want to have it be a really durable system, we have to answer that as part of a multi-year strategic plan. Because it takes, as you well know from being a high school teacher, it takes building the curriculum, even more importantly than building the facility, and then we'd have to have the infrastructure. But I'm quite sure that that's something I'm going to recommend to you would be a major focus of the next strategic plan. And then we would, we would do our homework to look at how we could make those things But you're absolutely right. It would not be a small effort to do that. But if any of you have not been, and we are not going to build a new high school for sure, but if anybody has been to Owatonna High School and what they've done there with the whole building is built around career pathways, it's really quite extraordinary. And it's really well-designed so that you go into the nursing space and you go into welding and automotive tech, and it just almost makes you want to enter that field, even if you're not interested, you know, in it. Because it's so nicely done. Maybe we should take a field trip. Not that we can fully replicate it, but I think we can more than replicate the quality of the programming they have. And then there are some space issues that we may have to work through if we really want to ramp that up. Because as we all know, those are the jobs that are going to be in this community. And so if we want to be preparing kids for that, we need to make that a priority.
Okay, so I have some thoughts. And they're my thoughts, and you can do with them what you will. So, and I could, I could be totally over in the weeds somewhere, because I usually am, and I'm okay with that tonight. So I'm listening, I'm hearing everything. Familiar with almost all the sites we discussed. So I'm looking through the Phoenix Academy, and I'm going to say it. I don't see, I don't, I don't quite understand why they're so in love with that facility. Even when I'm reading through like their positives, the wood shop and a seclusion room, to me, so here, here's my bright idea or my thought, and I don't know if you may have probably thought of this, but if we consider moving the rail and the middle school ALC into another building, would leave Frydale open. Why can not Phoenix go over there? And the reason why I say this is because you said there's development a time off. There will be an offer made, I believe, on that property at some point. They're going to want to buy that up for whatever developmental idea they have, which could potentially outweigh what we can purchase or sell the property for right now. But how do we hold on to a property with just having another property sit? To me, having a facility that has a working commercial kitchen so the kids are not eating cold hot dogs far outweighs them having a pretty seclusion room. I feel that a seclusion room in a workshop is much easier replicated in another building than tearing up a space to make a commercial kitchen. And for, I mean, I'm sure if anybody's done any even home remodeling, a commercial kitchen is a big undertaking and it could become a really big headache, you know? It's not, it's one of the more complicated remodels to have to do. I mean, putting in the gym would be easier. So I'm just not clear on why they have to stay in that space. I know that they have created, you know, made that space home, but if we have a facility that can potentially be there, and then that gives us time to think of that gymnastics situation as well, you know, because even though they wouldn't have a gym for part of the year, it's still better than, they currently have no gym and no kitchen. So have we considered any movement around holding that property? Because I feel like out of all the properties, that could probably potentially have the biggest increase for sale for holding it than some of the other properties. And like I said, I could be off-base there. And then my other question was about the SUN program and what that, what does that program need? And could it be facilitated if we said, okay, we'll use that, a different school space? Or is there an objection completely to them moving into that space? Or am I somewhere else?
Thank you, Director White-Warren, and I would say Mike, John or Mike to jump in. We did look quite extensively at Frydale for Phoenix Academy. There are two primary issues that were, the reason that that was not the recommendation and that the recommendation that I'm anticipating I'll make, though I haven't made it, that's what we're getting feedback from you on, is to upgrade Phoenix. The first was the, the very significant cost of the core infrastructure work that needs to happen at Frydale, which would then, on top of that, need to be replicating the facilities that are needed for a setting four facility. So it's a core issue of cost. It's a very, I mean, the 14 million is the bare basement. They're going to Alabama to get replacement parts for the, you know, HVAC that's in that building. So it was the cost piece. The second was the, I think it's correct to say, and I know you could sort of hear me, I suggest I might have phrased it a little differently than John did. They feel that the location geographically of Phoenix works very well for the students they serve in terms of its location in a place that's relatively easily accessible but not right in the middle of the city in that highest trafficked space in Rochester. There was significant concern, some of the, I want to be really careful here because I hate using deficit language about students, but that for some of their students who are often trying to get focused on learning, being in that very, very, not just public, but distraction-filled part of the city might be less ideal. That was the primary educational rationale. But I absolutely take your point. We looked at that. I'm also not going to name all the other facilities, but we looked at other facilities. And once again, the geographic location was something that the team there felt was really important, that where you go. And so the idea was, well, if the where you go works pretty well, how do we upgrade the building so that the building is more effective? But we absolutely could take a look at other options again. That's the purpose of a study session like this, absolutely. I don't know the degree to which Mona wants to, you know, add, but, you know, our students in the SUN program, it's relatively small number of kids. We have recently, as you know, put in place some shifts in our special education team and strategy. Great, great people, all still doing great work. I have asked that Mona and that team take a deep look at all of our programming for those students that have our highest needs, not just limited to SUN program. Kids who are often dealing with autism that creates particular challenges to self-regulation and focus, but that we really take a deep look at how all of our programs for students with disabilities, significant disabilities, who are not often mainstreamed, as we try to do as much as we can, are located in the city. And that frankly, we balance the educational impact of those programs, and many of them are wonderful, with the cost. Because we have some very, very high-cost programming. So I think I'm glad John included the SUN program so that it doesn't fall off. I would agree with leadership at Phoenix that if we can find a location for those students that meets their educational needs, they could be better served out of that facility. I don't know how much you've had a chance.
The whole, everyone in Phoenix?
The SUN program.
Oh, just the SUN?
Yeah.
The other students with their, the most severe, profound disabilities with significant behaviors. So you're, pretty aggressive behaviors in setting four. So, yeah, it's...
But we would be glad to come back to you with that issue as part of a larger discussion of our services for students with disabilities, for sure.
I would comment too on one reason we ruled out moving Phoenix Academy to the Frydale site is parking. We know that we need about 80 parking spots to run Phoenix Academy, and we have 68 at Frydale. And so we looked at different ways of, could we expand our property, our footprint? Could we buy the hotel? Could we buy the old Denny's? And really putting pen to paper with our Realtor and our construction manager, they strongly advised not to do that. They said the cost per parking space developed there would be beyond anything a normal, you know, reasonable business would do. It's just too costly to keep expanding there. Then there's the issue of, we know it's a prime redevelopment site, but if we dump 14 million into it, say we only get five years out of it, the cost per year of that $14 million investment, it might not look kindly upon the school district in the future for spending that amount of money and then potentially not even do it, sell it for 14 million. Maybe we'd get 10 million, but we'd still get less out of it than what we just put into it.
So just to be clear, we need to do the 14 million to even keep it up and running? There's no way to cut that cost?
That's to kind of just put it back together and make sure that all the mechanical stuff works the way it's intended to work.
You know, I, okay, first of all, I was just saying that if there was a way to kind of sit on the property and keep using it, you know, for the cheapest way, I do understand that we got to do some maintenance, and of course, I'm not saying to cut corners, but do what's absolutely necessary to keep it running for the students, you know, with knowing that we would be, you know, offloading the property, you know, fairly soon so that we're not in that position where we put a bunch of money into something we know we want to sell.
I'd also say that one other nuance, that education building codes are different from other building codes. And so if we were to sell it to, say, a nonprofit or somebody else wants to buy that property and redevelop it, they might not have to spend 14 million on it to get the HVAC upgraded because they don't have to do the same standards that we do with the air quality and circulation and all the things that we have to comply with for educational building codes.
Of course not. It's also a really good question. I mean, they're, we didn't, we circled around about that building many, many, many times because it's, for everything that you mentioned and, I mean, so.
Yeah. We looked at, just to give an example, one of the options I was personally really excited about and reluctantly had to give up on when I came to accept the cost of staying in Frydale. I wanted to move the central office to Frydale, and I wanted to bring rail over here into this building because it would have wonderful bus access. It's a really, it could work really, really well for them. We would have to grow rail, but I'd like to grow rail anyway. I hear of people from surrounding communities that say, you have this amazing program for these older adults. And so I, that was a hard one for me to give up, and it just came down to the cost of staying in Frydale right now as we see it at present. The parking is a huge issue. I'm glad you actually mentioned that, John, because we've learned the hard way that if we don't think clearly about that, we will have very frustrated, you know, staff and families who can't park at their building if we don't have adequate space.
And my, I'm sorry, one last question, and I'm going to shut up. Did we look at any options? So I know buying it outright is profitable, but did we look at any leasing options? Like leasing it to another facility? Because leasing, we make more money long-term if we own it outright. Even the old Skyline property, even if it was redeveloped, instead of selling the property, have we considered leasing the land? Because then we still own the rights to it, property go, value goes up, we still, you know, can do what we wish, but we can still get some upfront money from it that way and a continuous stream of income because we would be leasing out the property for whatever amount we determine. And it would, wouldn't be that upfront, you know, bulk cash, but long-term, we'd make more money.
Yeah, I would say at this point in our investigations, we have not run the mathematics on that specific question.
Yeah, we'd be glad to do that. Thank you. That's a great idea.
Kind of related, can you remind us what would happen with the proceeds from a sale of any of these properties? It reduces the debt, right?
Yes, so when you go to sell a school property, you have to look back and say, do you have any debt on this property? And we know that, like, if, we wouldn't do this, but a new school that we just constructed, we know we have debt on that. So if that were the case, you have to put the money in the debt service fund. That's a way to kind of pay back the taxpayers. What ultimately happens is there's a lower property tax in the year ahead after you make that deposit. If the building is free and clear, then you put it back and you restrict it into your operating capital account, and you have to use it towards another building project in the future. And so we've done that at least three times since I've been here. We sold off Gage East, we sold off Golden Hill, and we sold off the maintenance service building. And we've put all those proceeds back into other buildings. In fact, we're just spending the last of the maintenance service building proceeds on the adjustments we need to make at Old Pinewood to move Mighty Oaks into that facility. So, yes.
So those are proceeds that could be used, for example, to make some changes at future Phoenix Academy?
Absolutely. Correct.
Same question about leasing. Is there, given what we hear? Given what we hear about the lack of childcare in Rochester, is there a potential business that might be interested in leasing Mighty Oaks from us?
I think that's a great idea. I applaud you for bringing forward that suggestion. I think that's definitely something I would like to explore with our Realtor, like, you know, when you put something up for sale, you could say for sale or for a lease, you know, we're interested in generating offers and then examining them to decide, is it a good recommendation, path A or path B?
Director Whitman, if you can. Okay.
I had some.
Oh, go ahead, Director Whitman.
I just had a little bit of data points that I'm hoping people can fill in for me, like the number of students that we serve at Rail and middle school ALC. I think we learned that recently, but I didn't have that at the top of my list. And I guess the same question for Phoenix Academy and particularly the SUN program.
Stand by, I'm pulling up a membership report.
I have it too, if you don't, so I'll let you.
Yeah. I'll use last October. Okay, remind me which facilities, just asked about the...
Rail, the middle school ALC.
Yep. Yep, so Rail, we had 83 students, and we projected to be about that, the same going into this fall. Middle School ALC, we had 32 on our official count, you know, last October. I think we're working on expanding that up to, remind me, is it 90?
Yeah. And then how about Phoenix Academy? And is that all ages? That was one of the things that I didn't know.
Phoenix Academy is, last year, we had as young as first grade listed here, up through 12th grade, and there were 65 students.
I did have a couple other questions. Oh, the, some of the slides had current values for sale and that kind of thing. Do you have a current value for that Shannon Oaks property?
We have not had that appraised, no. I do not.
I think that would be helpful to know, just if we're comparing different things, that, you know, if we're thinking about keeping or selling, knowing what we're keeping would be helpful. And then Dr. McClellan, I think you kind of touched on this, but I didn't quite know the details, that the idea of moving P-Tech and C-Tech back to the high schools, are you still thinking about how that would look, whether it be one school, all schools for some of the curriculum? Is that still all under investigation?
Yes, we have our first meeting on that with the high school principals next week. Brandon McCraffick, who's our principal for students that are learning, so he has P-Tech, C-Tech, and MenSync. He has been doing an audit of courses, enrollment, and facilities. And so next week, we're bringing the high school principals into that discussion. And obviously, we'll come back to you with the conclusions that we have. Somewhat surprisingly, because my mental model was a little bit to Dr. Marvin's point, of kids in welding facilities, initially, I thought, working with RCTC faculty. And in fact, by and large, the actions that are happening are things that could happen in any room in one of our high schools taught by RPS staff. But we're busing them across town to do it.
And that kind of relates to one of the questions I had earlier in my head, that is that identical for P-Tech and C-Tech, or is that, are there differences in those two at all?
The P-Tech experience is, for our kids, is a traditional classroom with academic processes happening. Now, it's not very traditional because they have great teachers doing really exciting, innovative things, but it's like teaching and learning in a classroom. C-Tech has that. If you go to some of their design learning issues, it's kids on computers, like you'd see in a thing. But then you do have the space with beds and nursing, where they do the practical nursing. You have a science lab that has, you know, some stations where there's some interactive work happening, you know, the agriculture class is taught in that space. But it is really not heavy physical infrastructure that is very unique in those spaces. The welding space, and I'm, you know, I, the history predates me, but I, we've had some struggles with the upkeep of what was our welding space, and then kids were using the RCTC space. And what I understand from Brandon is that RCTC, who have been great partners, they've said, look, our enrollment is swelling here. We can't keep having fewer course offerings for RCTC students because RPS kids are using the. So welding is one of the ones where we may find some need to make some choices or be creative, but we really don't know that just yet.
And that kind of relates to one of my questions about P-Tech, is that if I understand what that program is designed for high school students, but they end up with a combined degree with a post-secondary degree, but it's all within RPS, then it's, they're not getting post-secondary like our PSEO students are getting?
They do, and what happens, one of the reasons I like the model so much, is that they start out in ninth and 10th grades, fully taught by RPS teachers currently on the campus. Interesting to note, there are more than 200 P-Techs across the country. We're the only one on a college campus. In most cases, it's in the high school. But they're taught by our teachers, and they're taught by our teachers in a sequence of courses that prepare them for the PSEO courses. And so by 11th and 12th grade, in a few cases, 10th grade, as our students have started to get a bit ahead, they are taking PSEO courses at RCTC that are in a vertical pathway in IT on one hand and practical nursing on the other. So they do get to PSEO. There's a point at which a P-Tech student is still an RPS student, but they're fully taking PSEO classes in the model that we're hoping more and more kids are successful in. The challenge initially, and I think it'd be a good time in the future board calendar to schedule an update on P-Tech for the board, the entering knowledge and skills, in particular in math, of some of our students when we started, created a big challenge for them to get ready for those PSEO classes. We're finding that is less and less of a hindrance, and so kids are getting to the credit-bearing PSEO classes frankly sooner than they were in the first few quarters of the program, which is intended in 11th grade. And so we're starting to get kids basically on the schedule to be taking those PSEO classes and starting in 11th grade.
So I want to make sure I understand what you said earlier, then, that it's the C-Tech that's all within RPS?
Well, the P-Tech classes that we have, that we rent space for are also only RPS. Because once a student is taking the PSEO classes, a P-Tech student is taking the PSEO classes, they're physically in the PSEO classroom, lab, or space. And they're no longer, it's funny because they actually come back to visit the RPS teachers in the P-Tech corner, but they're not taking classes there anymore. They're taking the classes in the rest of the building.
So if I hear what you're saying, that it's like an intentional pathway to that PSEO from ninth and 10th grade, they're more within, but then transition to that PSEO in a structured way?
It's perfectly said, Dr. McLaughlin. And, so I love it because there's that foundation, especially for kids who need additional support. Then what also is different is it's not just random acts of PSEO. It's a clearly articulated pathway that they take at RCTC. So it's not, what am I going to take? It's, I'm taking these PSEO classes to get my associates in information technology or my credential in practical nursing.
So for your vision, then, of bringing them back to high school, C-Tech would be like implementing certain curriculum back in the high school. P-Tech would be keeping that same model, but within a identified group of students that are going to go that intensive, structured path?
If we did this, very important to say that, because we, there's lots of things, we can't talk with our governing board unless we share ideas with you, but it doesn't mean anything's decided. They would probably take the ninth and 10th grade classes at the high school, and then once they are ready for PSEO, they would take PSEO like hundreds of RPS students do, either traveling to RCTC or taking it virtually online. The courses for P-Tech are physical, they're not asynchronous, they're there, but, you know, that might change over time. RCTC changes their curriculum. So they would finish the P-Tech program in their high school, the ninth and 10th grade, the part that's taught by RPS teachers, and then they would take the PSEO classes, probably physically at RCTC, which, you know, we have many kids who get to the campus for that purpose.
How would that then maintain P-Tech as a function of RPS?
We would look more like other P-Techs around the country, where the kids take the classes taught by the high school in their high school, and then they take the PSEO classes on the college campus, whether, many are virtual around the country now, but like, in our case, it's physically there.
What I hear you saying, then, is it's kind of like the curriculum paths, like you want to develop for other things. It would be keeping that path for certain things already?
It would. The thing about P-Tech that is different than traditional PSEO would be a transportation issue. Because we've worked very hard to have students in P-Tech who are from low-income kids, first generation of family to college. They often, we know, are less likely to have transportation to get to RCTC. So we bust them now as part of P-Tech because they're all going together. So were we to do this, we would have to look at how the students would gain access to their RCTC coursework, because they might not be able to transport themselves as many of our other students from very diverse backgrounds do to get over to RCTC for those classes. That's one of the issues we'd have to take a look at, because right now, we take the transportation barrier off the table for them.
Got it. And then I did have one question. You talked about earlier getting the stakeholder feedback. It sounds like summertime, maybe just principals. How much has the staff been involved in that? Do the principals have input already from the staff, or is that?
Not extensively, that's the next step. We felt that it was important to do a viability check with our school leaders, and then schedule this discussion with you, so that you've kind of heard it here first. And then absolutely, there will need to be broader stakeholder engagement starting in the fall. You know, sometimes people say, why'd you talk about that at the school board before you asked us? And I actually think this is how it ought to work. You're our governing board. We ought to tell you this is something we're looking at, but it doesn't mean it's a done deal. It doesn't mean, but it also doesn't mean we've been out there interviewing people and doing focus groups when you haven't given us the green light to explore this. So that would be something that would be happening early in the fall, in the affected programs.
I appreciate the answers, and I also really appreciate finally knowing something more about Fridell, that that's been a kind of a thorn in my side since I ran for school board, so.
Thank you.
I seem to remember that we had had some conversations about having a hard time meeting the demand for the C-Tech courses. Would moving it back into the high schools allow more kids to take C-Tech courses? What happened?
What I hear from our educators is yes. And what I hear from the limited number of students I've asked is yes. That there's two kind of, there's two kind of obstacles to going over to C-Tech, which many of our kids do, and which is a wonderful experience. So once again, we're not talking about undermining that kind of programming. Number one, you have to actually find out about it, because you, it's not, you don't walk by it in your high school, you know? So there's a, there's an out-of-sight, out-of-mind problem. And then, even if you know about it, you have to be willing to leave your high school. You're taking fewer classes to travel across the city. So there, again, there's a barrier. Kids who are in extracurriculars often will self-select out of it as well. And so we, you know, it's anecdotal, but the idea being, we might be able to grow this programming if it was physically in our high schools, which, again, glass half-full, declining enrollment opens us some possibilities. It would have been farcical for me to talk about this two or three years ago when our high schools were bursting at the seams. But as, as you know, in Rochester and nationally, the biggest high, the biggest class for the next 20 years, foreseeably, is, depending on how you measure it, last year's or this year's that's there. And from that point, the, there's no room at the end problem is not going to be the problem of our, most of our, you know, schools, and we would have to manage enrollment across them. So it opened some opportunities to think about programming in a way that we couldn't think about because we just had so many kids.
Okay, I have, I have a number of questions. First of all, it's my understanding we don't have any more classes in the white buildings? They will all move to C-Tech, the nursing programs? I mean, we're not leasing that space anymore.
Definitely not leasing it, and I don't think we're using it.
Okay. And then the second thing is, does Mayo High School still have their auto mechanics, I think maybe small engines class? And do the majority of students who are, do they self-transport to that? Or do we actually bust from Century and John Marshall?
Oh, does Mayo offer it to Century and JM?
They do.
I don't know what the, yeah, I don't know what those enrollment numbers look like right now. I, JM meets a lot of those needs physically there. I know Century has very limited option. I've heard that, heard about that Century kids.
I mean, I know at one point, Mayo had a really, really good auto mechanics.
I'm not aware of dedicated bus routes that are taking kids for that class down to Mayo High School, so I'm thinking if they are, they're self-transporting themselves over to Mayo.
I think there's just a handful of kids that go either to JM or Mayo from Century. Century doesn't have the shop.
Okay, but JM does?
JM has a shop.
I will also say, as part of our Mayo renovation, we've been thinking about this ahead, is trying to make sure that we're welding lab-ready at a minimum as we work on that project. So just in case there's a shift in something in the future.
Do you have more? No. Director Cook?
Yeah, I wanted, the other thing I wanted to follow up on is the office space for needs, you know, in the building we're in right now. I don't have any, like, great ideas necessarily, but just wanted to surface that I think it makes a lot of sense to lease actual office space and not have a sort of converted former school. And I'm not sure really what the, the needs are, if it's operational or otherwise, to be in the center of the city, or how broad the center of the city is really defined. But along the northwest part of town, and definitely the former IBM site, the technology campus, there has a whole lot of empty space. I don't know if any of it would make sense for the needs of our district, but it just, it seems like something we ought to be really considering. The, the other thought I had about that is, it's probably worth pressing a little bit on whether there really needs to be 120 space for 120 employees altogether. I don't know if that's really the case, but it might be worth just thinking that through a little bit, if it could be 50 here and 70 there, and, you know, whether, whether it really does need to be that large of a, like, 20,000 square foot area, because that narrows the search pretty considerably, so.
You're right on there.
And, and the other, the other thought I had is, I was remembering, I think, three years ago, probably my first year on the board, one version, one iteration of a long-term facility study identified some pretty significant needs at, at this building, HVAC and so forth. And if it's 100 some years old, that makes an awful lot of sense. And so, yeah, just underscores to me the, the long-term costs of being in a really old building that's not particularly well-suited to office work anyhow. So I would just underscore that that is a, something that really ought to be looked at carefully.
Thank you, Director Cook.
I'm sure, Director Cook, that Mr. Carlson is quite happy that you just said that, because he shares every single thought that you just, that you just shared very passionately and worked very hard. And actually, to Director Whitehorn's point, we also looked at keeping Fridell and moving office space there too, and it ran into the same cost piece. I think that because we're not proposing to put major money into this, besides enhancing the area for the families who enroll in person, we should keep looking for that. Our initial investigation, you did go out and look at IBM, the space there, it didn't find a near-term option, but I think your point about splitting up some folks is an option. In fact, John has moved his office out of this building, and he didn't disappear from the earth. He still comes back here, and Amy has been operating outside this building for a long time. So it's not true that central office all has to be here for us to work together.
And I don't know if this is the right time to do this estimate, if you're considering leasing, but is there a way to figure out a cost of a different location for the boardroom? Because if we got rid of Edison, the boardroom would go with it. And we have a lot of infrastructure of audio/video, access for the public, a central location for people to attend our meetings in person. So I don't know if there's a way to put together a package of, where are we to not have the boardroom at Edison? What would our options look like? And are those, do those options exist?
Director Whitehorn?
So my, my thought in some conversation was, what are the costs of the maintenance on the properties we're not using? And then I was passing notes over here, so I'm telling them myself. So what I asked him was, have we looked at agricultural dollars? So I got on my, my small business hat here, which says, anything I own has to make me money. If I'm, if I own it and it's sitting, it's a problem. So have we looked at, you know, green space grants, or, you know, throwing a couple solar panels on a property? I mean, anything that can generate revenue instead of just having a spot sit there empty. You know what I mean? Even if we put one wind thing on there, I don't know. But, I mean, there are, there, I know, I know the Department of Agriculture, don't quote me because things are changing, does normally have some hefty funding for green spaces. If you, if we have land that's not being fertilized, I mean, there, if you look on there, there's a ton, ton of things that they have grants and funding for. So I just don't know how creatively we've looked at some of these spaces that are costing us money and not, you know, generating us some revenue, because money is an issue, and we know that things, you know, we're looking at declining rates, but I, I guess I'm not a fan of just holding on to a property that's not making us any money, but we're spending money to maintain it. Like, my thought is that we need to be doing something with it to generate dollars back into our school system. That's my thought.
So I can answer definitively, on the DNR property, we pay zero for that. There's been no ongoing or any cost. At one time, in my files, I do believe it was leased or rented for some crop production. That has obviously not been happening in my 15 years here, because there's no income coming in, and as I assessed or went out to the property... And as I assessed or went out to the property, trees have started growing up. So clearly it's been a while since crop production has happened there. Mike could answer about how much we have to maintain the Shannon Oaks crop because there is a little bit of expense on that.
It's very minimal as far as what, you know, mowing. We don't do any plowing. There is some cost to mothball some of our buildings. I think some people just think we turn the key and walk away. But we usually have to keep the systems on so we don't grow mold or freeze pipes in the winter. So holding on to properties with buildings on them does end up being a little bit of an extra cost. But that particular property, and I don't know what, since it's in the city limits, what our options would even be as far as something on that property. I thought of it when you were talking about having a corn crop or something. I don't let a farmer use it, but I don't know what the, the city bylaws would be to as well.
And I, and like I said, I've just, I've done very minimal look, but I know they even give grants if you will not put pesticides on ground just so they can test it. So they have a lot of opportunity for just green spaces. I mean, it's, you gotta do a little digging, but I mean, it generates, I mean, if it'd generate one extra dollar, it's, I mean, I just don't, I just wanted to see the benefit of us not just sitting on a property like we've had an empty school. That surprised me since 1976. I don't know what it costs, but I'm sure if we add up even the minuscule amount that we've spent maintaining that over the years, it, it's probably a slightly embarrassing number that we, you know what I mean, that had, that we haven't gotten back from that property. So I just don't want to continue a pattern of us just holding land to hoard it. I mean, it should at least be creating revenue for our students in, in some way or being useful in some way. Just my thought.
Thank, thank you, Director Whitehorn. We will take a look at that.
I have another question for you. Do you want to wrap up?
If any of you really do want a walk back through time and part like the most awesome space for the worst haunted house or best haunted house ever, you should take John up on his offer to go out to the Skyline facility. I'm serious, I did a couple of weeks ago. I don't know why we've kept it. It is decrepit, but it also is oddly fascinating to walk through this old school back from the days when, for instance, there was no lunch room because everyone went home for lunch. And the, the principal could see like every single, you know, kid because it's one little hallway and a teeny little office. And you feel like you're walking back into a different era, but it really is. I mean, there's tires in there, there's an air conditioning unit in there. I mean, Mike and the team have done a good job of, you know, keeping it bridled. I have to say, if I was one of the neighbors, I would be thrilled at the prospect that something's going to happen because it's right near very neat homes where people look at this. And I thought, oh, don't let them know who I am. I don't want them to blame me for like not, you know, doing it. Because the lawns are like, you know, nicely kept up and there's little playsets. And I assume the parents say, don't ever go over to that evil building there because it really is.
So you're saying we can make some money as a haunted house?
I thought that, I said that actually.
That sound like a check come in?
I did say that.
One other thought, not about the haunted house thing, but I, I forgot to ask the, the curriculum warehouse that's currently in the Education and Service Center, where would that be relocated to? What are the needs of that? Does it need like environmental controls or what?
Oh, yeah, that's what he said.
It could be. Mona may want to add, I think first of all, there is some purging that can go on. We have, I think, been retained some materials to the point where we, we're not, CDs are not going to make a comeback. And so we can make some decisions on that. And I think that we, again, with declining enrollment, we will find space. And so that's the.
We've talked about a couple of different things. Like we've talked about if there's room in a building. Like I went out and was looking at, I was trying to guess, like, how many classrooms could this be consolidated down to? Like if we, so could it go into four classrooms if there was a building that had like four open classrooms? And then John, I think you had a different idea about someplace else. But we're, we're, we're talking about like just different things.
Yeah, are there places that have a loading ramp or something?
So we have to think about like, like the dock and how to get stuff in. And because even getting, if we use a classroom, you can't bring the pallets in the doors, the classroom doors aren't big enough. So you're going to have to have the staff to be able to unload prior to getting in. So we have to look at all of that stuff. But the, before we even do that, Dr. Patel's right. Like there's a lot of purging that needs to happen. We got so excited because the, like way too excited, John had to tell me we're not doing it this summer. And I was like, oh, we're not? Because I thought we were. We all went out, we decided what, like, okay, we're, we're moving. We put out an email with like, if you want to come out and pick up some materials like for teachers. It was like, they told me it was like Black Friday out there. The teachers came out at the very end of the school year and got what they needed for their, or wanted for their classrooms, things that they could take, and which was fantastic. And there's still more work that needs to be done. And then I think once we see what we're down to, we'll be able to make better decisions. It's, it's hard right now to say, is there really space somewhere? Like next to Paper Tiger, I think you were saying. Maybe not. I don't know. Anyway.
Not over committing to that space yet, but.
We just need to see how much we really, how much space we really, really need. And we have to look at, do we need to keep it all centralized? Or is there a way to, to do it? Is there, at the buildings, can buildings store their own extras? And if a classroom closes, they're responsible for holding on to the material? Because if it opens up, that grade level opens up the next year, they have the material there. And then they, as a principal, that's what I had to do. But then if, if another building, if it opens up somewhere else, we have to have some sort of process to get them the material. So we're looking at all of that. But we definitely can shrink it and find a place for it to go so that the kids can have a gym. Like that's for sure.
Last call. Great, thank you very much.
If I might, Madam Chair, just add, as you know, I have told members of the cabinet who are not necessarily going to participate in the discussion of board goals or my evaluation, that they can take off and enjoy the evening should they so choose. And so thank you all very much.
Oh, you're gonna miss all the fun stuff.
Please go aside.
While they're transitioning board members, we have two agenda items before we break for a closed session. Would you like to take a break now?
Yes.
All right. Then we are in recess for 10 minutes at 7:08 PM.
And my device is about to die.
Where are you going?
Up to my ass. Oh.
Give two minutes. Maybe we'll see what we can do tonight.
Where is Skyline? I'm really curious.
All right, you guys ready?
Yeah.
No.
The board is back in session at 7:18 PM. Our next item is a monetary item, the school board self-evaluation for 2024-25. So in order to inform development of our goals, we discussed the results of our school board self-evaluation. For the seventh time, the Rochester School Board has used the Minnesota School Board Association Framework for Governance Survey as the tool for our self-evaluation. And the results are available in this agenda item in Sibley. The school board self-evaluation results reflect the collective responses of the board team, which includes the superintendent. These results build a profile of the board's work in five standards of board practice proven to support student achievement. These standards are conduct and ethics, vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy and communication. Each board member answered 71 questions with a rating of always, most of the time, some of the time, never, or don't know. The, across all standards, if you look at the results, 81 to 97% of the answers said we were meeting the standards either always or most of the time. And I think we'll next review the results for each section. And after we review the results, I'd like board members, if you would, to think about when you were filling out the survey for that section. Were there any specific questions in this section that led to your ranking? And there is a document that you were provided a copy of, and it's also in Sibley, called the MSBA Questions with Information Source. So that shows the questions that you answered that rolled up to the score for that standard. So for example, in standard one, conduct and ethics, provide responsible school district guidance, are always percentage increased by 10% to 62%. And so when you were filling out the survey, if you're looking at the questions under framework, under the under the MSBA Questions with Information Source, were there any of those questions under standard one that you thought particularly led to you ranking it always? Or for those people who may have ranked at another level, is there any of those questions that stood out to you?
Maybe number twenty-one a little bit.
Okay.
Because I'm still, yeah. So we have our two newest board members, Stephanie and Justin Justice. Do you feel like we were adequately oriented to form a being inclusive team? I mean, what, I think we had the school board handbook that was just cut off the press when you came on the board. But do you feel like there was anything more that could have been or should have been done?
No, well, the, the, the manual is, is very helpful. I mean, definitely for incoming board members, but I, I think also really helpful to the community in general and people who might be considering running for school board. I also think the retreat we did two-plus years ago with the Clifton Strengths Finder tool, I, I felt like I got a lot out of that, especially as kind of the newest member of the group at that point, or, um, yeah.
Um.
Director Warren.
I would say that it's, it's a lot of information. I appreciate the thoroughness of the information. I would say it's being like the, the fresh meat here, the newest of the new. It's a lot of information for somebody who doesn't have, um, who hasn't previously been on a board or, you know, did that type of thing. I, I would say that I, I feel blessed in the fact that, um, because I'm very open and I'm, I'm very, it's very easy for me to speak up and say, I don't understand what's going on. Um, made it easy for me to feel included. But if I had to base it on just the way it was presented without the me part of it, I could see how it could be intimidating for someone else, um, because it is a lot of information. There's a lot of, um, I think right now we have, and I will say out loud, we have a wonderful board. I feel that everybody has been very welcoming and accommodating and, you know, answering questions. But I know because we are elected, that, that doesn't always necessarily mean that, that will be who's always on the board. I would say I wish there was a better practice for onboarding, um, everyone. I feel that upfront, it's just so, it's a lot of, it's a lot. It's a lot, it's a, it's a lot upfront. So I know there are things that I still haven't completed, but I don't think I've really even had the opportunity to fully digest everything that we are, are given upfront. So I don't knock the process. I, I appreciate having the information and knowing where to go to get the information. But looking at it from like a learning standpoint, I, it's a, it's a lot. I think the example they even say at MSB is like taking a sip of water from a fire hydrant. And I guess those things concern me because that means that they're aware that they're throwing a lot at you at one time, but no one has ever considered, how do we streamline this in a better way? So that people, um, so that you do get new blood in, you know? Because it's, it's a lot, uh, being a new, new elect, coming off a campaign and then having all of this information thrown at you at, at one time. So I don't think that there's enough time to digest, uh, all of the information, but I do appreciate knowing where to get the information. So I, I, I guess I'm kind of fair to middling on it, that it, it's a lot of information. I'm glad the information is given, um, but it's hard to digest. So it's kind of like trying to, to jump on a train that's, that's moving, right? Because you're trying to learn while things are, are moving along. There's really not a break, so I don't know how, how you're going to do that.
Give yourself some grace on that because there is a lot. And, I mean, I think it's, I, I, I think it could take up to your entire first term to really get a handle on everything. So the fact that you didn't, weren't able to grasp it all during the first week.
They what?
Yeah.
Oh, well, praise the Lord.
Any other comments on standard one? Move on to standard two, which is vision. Set and communicate high expectation for student learning with clear goals and plans for meeting these. Are always rating increased five percent to sixty-nine percent. Were there any questions or items under standard two, which is questions under thirty-one, that you might want to highlight or led to your ranking in this area? Do you have them?
Great, Director Mark.
Well, no, I'll just, I, uh, for this one, I, I think, I know that this board really expects, our entire district to do the best we can, our students, both in terms of what they're learning, how they're learning, and the kind of sense of belonging that they, that they feel. I know we can't control how every student learns and the fact that we have the high expectations. I wish that meant that every single student would succeed. And so every time there's a, a student who doesn't do well for whatever reason, I think we all feel responsible. And I'm, one thing I think that we're doing better is involving, reaching out to the community and trying to involve more people in supporting all of our kids, knowing that one superintendent, one board, one staff can't meet all the needs of every student. But, um, I think that we consistently have high expectations.
And I look at question twenty-nine, continually monitor progress towards the goals and outcomes of the strategic plan. And I look at where this standard was when Superintendent McHale joined us, and are always for standard two in twenty twenty-one was twelve percent. And now it's sixty-nine. And I, um, I think that the development of the strategic plan, implementation that's happened over the past few years, I think the conversation that has been continuous between the board and the superintendent regarding the kind of information we want to see when we're hearing updates on the strategic plan or making decisions on them, has, that, that's why our ability to rate ourselves on that has increased because I think we've invested in that process of developing the strategic plan, monitoring progress. And it just, again, I keep saying it, but it's the first time since I've been in the district for twenty-five years that we are rolling over from one strategic plan to a new one, having been able to measure our progress and mark our, our successes. So, um, that's one of the reasons why I think my ratings over time have changed in this standard.
I just wanted to, uh, so I think we're doing good with the community. I think we do need to still continue to look at ways to, um, overshadow some of the bad information. I think unfortunately, there's still a lot of bad information that is overshadowing some of the good work that we're doing. I don't have, uh, I hate having an issue without having a suggestion for a solution, but I do think that is a, there's a barrier. I'm not, I feel we're doing better, we're trying to get better. I know COVID created some big gaps. And I'm just saying this as a parent who has a son that's, what, thirty-six years old? So now having a kid that's eighteen, I've, um, I've been in the school system for quite some time, and I have seen a change in, um, and not a great change in my opinion on the community and parent involvement, you know, there's been a little bit of a decline. I don't know how we increase that backup, how we re-enter the parents and the community back into the school. And, and again, this is just a personal observation, like I said, from parenting through, through a couple decades here that, you know, those, we, you know, my older kids will tell you, we had a, parents were heavily involved in a lot of things. Now I feel like we're, we're grasping at parents a little bit. So I don't know how do we re-engage, um, the school and the parents again. Sometimes I feel like there's a little bit of a, of a barrier, um, there. That's, that is the only area in that section that gave me pause about what we can do as a board, to encourage, and, and could it be language? Could it be that, you know, we need to, um, I don't know which president it is, I'm not good at history, um, historian, but there was one president that I remember learning of that said had, had that ability to speak to people where they were. And everybody felt that they talked very, very good, very good at that. So I don't know if it's the language that we use that kind of goes over people, if we're not quite meeting our community where they are so they understand. Because when I read through it from a community member lens, sometimes, um, even sitting on the board, I don't fully understand what is happening, right? You know, I'm learning what is happening. So I can just imagine that we do have parents and, um, people that are getting information or trying to understand what is happening, but they're not getting good information. So that, and, and again, in my business hat, bad information spreads a lot faster than good information. So I don't know what we can do as a board, um, to promote the good information, to make sure that the information is being appropriately given, if that makes sense, so that we can try to start to close up that barrier between our parents and our educators.
Anything else for standard two? All right, we'll move on to standard three, structure. Create conditions district-wide for student and staff success. Always increased by six percent to fifty-five percent, but two percent of the answers submitted were never. And it's one of the few categories that actually had some never responses. So does anybody have anything to share about standard three structure, which are questions thirty-two through fifty? Should we begin?
Yeah. I'll just say, um, having written a lot of surveys like this, this is, there's a lot of items in here where the language suggests a standard that somebody could understandably say is impossible to achieve. Because it's written in what we would call a very maximalist way, like district-wide. And so if you have visited any one of our schools, and you're like, yeah, things are going well, but they're struggling, you might mark, mark it down. So just the way these are written, I think, I wouldn't, I don't know, it might have been me who said the, the two percent. Because if you, if you really mean district-wide, you mean all schools. I think that the trend is still in a positive direction.
Yes. We have gone from, uh, twenty-nine percent always in twenty twenty-one to fifty-five percent this year.
I would also say, if I can share, Nathan, an alternative way to sort of look for the favorables in something like this is actually to combine the top two. Because the top two is, it allows for someone like me who's going to split hairs and say, not all the time, but most of the time. Then you get the people who are feeling good, or, you know, you also have to pay attention to the bottom two, like oftentimes. So if you look at our top two on most of these, that's frankly pretty out of the park when you combine the two.
And in this case, it's ninety percent always or most of the time, and only eleven percent some of the time or never.
And I just want to mention to that, uh, and this is probably a mute point, but I have a hard time with always and never. So I probably didn't put always or never on anything, because it, it's, it's too definitive to me. How, how can I say that this is always happening? Like, it, it, I don't know. And, and like you said, we're talking about all of the school district. I can say it's happening the majority of the time, but, so I might be one of the not-so-alwaysers, but not in a negative way. I just have an issue with definitively saying that something is always happening or it's never happening. I just.
Never say always.
I mean, I say it, but I'm, I'm, but what, I mean, when you're reading, like he was saying, I don't, I don't like to read things that, I try to read it quick because otherwise my brain starts telling me, yeah, but for what and where? So I, I had to be quick with this. I had to read it, first thought and go, because otherwise I get stuck in that loop of, well, what about this school? And what about this spot? So.
So I think always and most of the time is a good way to look at it.
Yeah, I like that.
Director McGlaughlin.
I looked at my answers to this whole section kind of as a indication of the time that I've been on the board, and I think, you know, realistically tribute to the chair of the current board, that we have so much more structure than when I started. The example even being black and white in front of us, that we have a document that talks about structure, but then also references the specific policies. That when I first started on the board, I didn't have anything to tie those concepts together in an easy way, and I think that this does. But I think our agendas and our A B C D calendar and all the things we've done to improve, not only for the board and our internal communications, but also in, so that the community can access this information and learn from it, I think is saying a lot about our structure and how we've improved over time.
Here, Nathan, just one quick, one quick comment too is, and, and this is, I think, what precipitated several years ago for you to put all the policy references in here, which is, you know, are we answering this as an individual, individual or as a board? And if I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are on before I answer the question, of course, which we don't, it makes it a little bit more challenging. I'm done. And I, I remember in the past, um, never for the board, but I believe for superintendent evaluation, um, for every one of the standards, there used to be a binder where, like, for example, if the goal or the, the standard is related to the long-term facilities plan, superintendent would have had a copy of the approved long-term facilities plan to show. And I think if we look at this chart, maybe for future years, there's, um, either links to agenda dates or agenda items that we could fill in to show that we've actually completed that piece. Like, like I said, I just looked at the long-term facilities plan. We could fill it in, the date that the board approved it, so that we would almost have a ongoing measure of how we're accomplishing some of the work in these standards as we're going on. So we don't have to think about it at the end of the year.
Right.
When did we do that? Did we do that? I remember doing that, but wouldn't have to search for it.
I, I think the, the, the most challenging, um, item in, in standard three is, is number forty-six, keeping the community informed about the district's financial status. I don't think there's any question that we normally do that through our, our board meetings, where detailed information about the district's finances are on the agenda every single month. But if the, and so the, the information is technically available. And then, and there's also, um, a, um, dashboard that displays a lot of that information that's linked straight through the Sibley agenda item. But if that results in the community being informed, which is kind of what is suggested by that standard, I, I just think that is work that is never done. And, um, and it's a, and it's a complicated story and, um, and hard for, for people to grasp. So it's just continuous, ongoing work.
All right, nothing else on standard three? Standard four, accountability. Hold school district accountable for meeting student learning expectations. Always increased by ten to sixty-six percent. And the combination of always and most of the time in standard four was ninety-six percent. And never increased from zero to one percent, but total some of the time and never was only four percent. So any thoughts on accountability? I think when you look at the individual questions of fifty-one through sixty-one, if we were to go and, you know, write something in each box about when we had done this, we would have concrete meeting dates, probably multiple, where we had, um, taken these actions. Which is probably one of the reasons why this is so, such a high ranking.
I, I would just say fifty-six because, uh, the superintendent here has often said that he wished he had a more robust, um, evaluation, um, done. He's mentioned that a few times, so that was something that I also thought of when we were going through this, seeing that I have not gone through the superintendent's evaluation previously. But he has mentioned several times that he would like a more robust evaluation done on, on his performance, so.
I, I, yeah, I appreciate that. I think the term robust- I, I think the term robust is not wr- wrong, but I think, I think the board's evaluations have been pretty robust. I would frankly like one that is more actionable for me to improve, which I think is what you mean. So it's been very robust, but using the framework that we've used from MSBA with a hundred and forty different, uh, priorities and the way some of them are written, it hasn't always given me clear understanding of like, okay, this can get better. So I think it's, in that sense, robust, but I think there has been a ton of effort put into, put into it. Um, and it, it's gonna be fun to talk about where we go in the future.
And I wasn't knocking it. Like I said, I haven't gone through the, I just know that he had mentioned that. He would, he would want more from it, so excuse my language.
All right, hearing no, nothing else on standard four. Standard five, advocacy and communications. Um, engage local community and represents the values and expectations they hold for their schools. Now, this increased by ten percent to thirty-eight percent, but this is the only standard where always is below fifty percent. And the total of al- always and most of the time is eighty-one percent, which is our lowest ranking. Some of the time increased by nine percent and never increased by one percent. So, um, I think we've heard even interspersed with some of the other standards that communication and engagement, um, are concerns that we have for our own, um, performance. Is there anything specific in the questions of thirty-two through seventy-one that anybody wants to comment on? That might be useful in our goal setting in our next item? Chair Nathan?
Yes. I think maybe part of it is, is because we have been trying to take a deeper dive into our communication processes that, I mean, for me, I have a better understanding of what's possible and what's not possible, which might have influenced some of the, um, responses for how we're doing. Because if you don't know what it is you're supposed to be doing, then everything must be okay. But once you start really looking at it, it's like, oh, we did this, but we could have done X, Y, and Z or more. So I don't think it's necessarily, um, a failing, but maybe just that we have more information and experience with our communications with the public.
Director Marvin?
Lynn, I think this is gonna lead right into our, our goal setting too. But for instance, um, under standard five, it's number sixty-six. Ensure the public is well-informed of the board's roles and responsibilities. Um, I know we try to make sure that people know what boards do and what they can't do. And I don't mean this in any way demeaning, but I think there are a lot of people that don't care. They're really involved with the school district. They're really involved with their kids, with their kids' schools. Um, but I think that they, I'm not sure that they know exactly what school boards do and what our responsibilities are. And if that continues to be one of those things, do we, we need to do a better job of listening, for sure, to the community. Um, and then part of our role too is to educate them. But I'm not sure if it's critically important that every person in the community understands exactly what school boards do. That should be a, a goal of ours. Or if it's to, um, en- ensure that we're doing the best job we can in sharing with them what the district is about and what the initiatives are that are gonna affect their lives and their kids. So it's kind of a balance.
Director Whitman?
So, um, so like question sixty-three, modeling cultural, racial, ethnic, understanding and sensitivity. Um, some of these things I think we have a desire to do. And, I mean, some, some of it is not even from our own, you know, not necessarily in our control, if, if this makes sense, what I'm saying. You know, like, representation is important and we wanna hire, you know, more staff and see our, see our leadership team look more like what our population looks like, right? Those types of things. Um, but I think that there's just work to be done, but I don't know. I guess I struggled with how much work of, of that is of the board and how much work of that is, you know, just work that just needs to be done. If I'm making sense, I may not be making sense in this one. But I will also say that there, you know, I, and from my earlier comment is, you know, we, we do truly need to find some, some better ways of, of getting, getting the, the communication with the community involved. And, and I don't know, uh, what that looks like, uh, but I did struggle with this part because I don't feel that we're not trying. Um, I think we are trying a ton of things, but we're not seeing the response. So I don't know how do we shift that, you know? I think we, we constantly have ideas, but if we're very honest, they're not really producing the feedback we're looking for. So my concern is, even as a board, have we gotten too far away from the community? You know, I feel like as us being elected, we, we need to maybe reengage with our bases and really be listening to what, what, there's, there's, I feel like there's a piece missing that we're just, we're just missing. If that, it was a tough section for me because I feel like we are trying. I feel like we are doing many things to engage and to, to want people to come, but there's something that's not connecting. Cause we're trying to reach out, but we're not getting that, that flowing, um, relationship back from the community, if, if this makes sense. I don't, I don't know how to, you know, I'd like to see a better flow of communication between the community and the board. I would also like to see the board, and, you know, my personal feeling is anything that happens in the community involves the school. Cause if they're not a student here, they could be a student here, you know? Or they could have a loved one who is a student here. And I, I feel that there's a little bit of a clear divide that, you know, we're creating between the board and the community. But I don't know how we, how we do this, but I feel like there needs to be a little bit more synchronization with what's happening in the community and what's happening in the board.
Anything else on standard five? Because Director Marvin is right, it does flow very nicely into our next agenda item, which are our school board goals for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. A reminder to the board that this is a preparatory, you know? So we'll discuss some rough outlines for the goals and, um, draft something in the interim and then bring it back for the August fifth meeting, where we'll allow some time for us to work, um, on the goal language there before we take action. And if we're not ready to take action on the fifth, we can always delay that. We're flexible with this, cause this is, this is a definition of our work. So let's first review our goals from twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, this also gives you a sense of the structure of how we've written the goals in the past few years, using the SMART, um, goal framework of simple, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. So keep that in mind as you think about our goals going forward. Um, we did, this document is in Symbiote as well for people who are watching the, the meeting. Goal one, the board will participate in four listening sessions in the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We did not complete this goal, um, and we have had some difficulties in the past two years, um, mostly due to finding the right dates, the board member availability and low attendance of the sessions we have held. However, I think we should give recognition to all of the board members' participation in the referendum outreach, um, from the beginning of the school year last year through November, which was, you know, about half of the school year where we all participated in outreach, had conversations that would be very similar, the kinds of conversations we would have at listening sessions or other kinds of outreach. And, and I think personally, not speaking for other board members, um, that kind of outreach was great. Because, and, and I think we might be able to remember it and perhaps use it as we think about our goals going forward with community engagement, especially in listening sessions, because it started with a topic. We were trying to inform them about something very specific that we wanted to talk to them about. And then while their questions could, could have just focused on that, it didn't. It sort of led to either a conversation about just the referendum information or some of the broader conversations about the district. And that got me to thinking about how we might be able to think about our community engagement, especially our listening sessions in the future. Is it helpful to start with a common piece of information that we're sharing with the community? And then if they wanna ask questions about that, great. And if they wanna ask questions about something broader, great too. But at least we're, we're doing half of the work of trying to provide information and giving them an opportunity to comment on something specific as well as, you know, broader issues. That was what the experience of the, um, at least the referendum, um, gave me. Anybody else have any comments on goal one, um, from last year?
I, I think the idea of more structure in those listening sessions, like to a particular topic or two, or something that's coming up, we know is coming up on a future agenda that we specifically really want community input on before we have a meeting or a study session would be good. Um, otherwise it's like, well, here we are, what do you wanna talk about? And I think that, that's not particularly, um, helpful because, um, we hear the loudest voices, but that might not be representative of the majority of the community. And sometimes people don't come because, well, they think everything's going okay.
Director Marvin?
You know, again, I think that there are two parts of this. Is what do we think the community needs to know about? And we can have sessions and say, here's some information you need to know. But the other thing that we really, really have to do, and I think that informally, we have a whole lot of board members who've doing, who've been doing this, um, you know, throughout, is what do we need to know? What do you wanna tell the board? What are you happy about? What do you think needs changing? Um, what questions do you have? Those are pretty easy, cause either here's the answer, or here's the person who will have the answer, or I don't know, we better find out. But how are we making ourselves available to the public so they can tell us what they think the district needs to know? And, you know, we have email, we have comments to the board. And I think we need to get better at that and, and make sure we're at gatherings in places where people can come and let us know what they're thinking. When we had the listening sessions, which I thought were wonderful, except that most of the people who came, um, had an issue, and they were important issues, but they were ones the board didn't deal with. So what we could do is help walk them through, these are the people you need to, uh, talk with, or here's who you can work with, or I can connect you with someone. Um, but they weren't district issues. They were almost always about a specific student, a specific issue, and they were important. But I think we can do that without having the listening sessions, just being in the community. So people know, there's a school board member, um, I can talk with them. Um, I think we need to do a better job too of making, trying to make sure that people know what the chain of communication is. Ms. Nathan, I thought you had a, a really good idea when you suggested that, you know, our video recaps apparently did not win Emmys, um, and the viewership was low, which I think tells us something. Maybe a once a month, and Kathy, this was your idea, a once a month newsletter from the board. Here are some of the big things that were happening at board meetings. Here's some of the big issues. And then people can read it, not read it, whatever. I think we do a pretty good job of informing people about big issues for the district. I think we don't do as well in terms of getting community feedback, um, to the board. And even when we have committees that are supposed to be getting feedback, I think those tend to be more, here's some stuff that you should know about this initiative. And I think if we have advisory committees, we really need to listen to advice. We may not take the advice, but I think we need to do a better job of understanding how people, what people's experience is good.
I was multitasking.
So I, I agree, I agree.
Director Marvin? I think that we need to do a little bit of a combination of it though, right? Cause I think there are some parents that benefit from a newsletter. I think there are, you know, some parents that, you know, even though, like you said, we didn't win Emmy, but some people do like the little video recaps. I think we need to do, uh, some, so just from previous community work that I've done, where we've had the best opportunities is where we go to where the people are. So whether it's to the apartment complexes they're in, cause we've all discussed childcare issues, transportation issues, um, and to director workman's response, that just because it's the loudest voice doesn't mean that it's even the majority of the voice. And unfortunately, coming from a community advocacy lens, yes, we see the same twelve people all the time, with the same problem all the time. Um, but, you know, maybe we need to think a little, if we really are thinking about the community, we're going to have to think of where the community is. Um, think about where our children are, you know, where they are concentrated, right? Think of, uh, when we're talking about equity, are we thinking about those poverty pocket spaces? So, um, just like some of the things that we've done that work well in the past is like when we do the movie nights and those things at the apartment complexes with other organizations I've partnered with, what's nice about that is you're going to where your kids are. You know, people are not having to go far. So you're getting a ton of information, a ton of organic information. Um, and I think part of our communication strategy improves when people begin to trust your board members, right? So they see you in places, like you said, they need to be organic. It doesn't always have to be a formal listening session, um, even though I think there is value to those as well. Um, but I think some of it does need to be more organic, but it doesn't mean... So when I say organic, it doesn't mean that we don't have a plan, right? So just like we know what, what our agenda is, there are community activities that are planned throughout the year, and we have our schedule planned throughout the year. So it doesn't hurt to know that there's this community event that is happening near the time that we'll be talking about budgeting. This is a great time for board members to go out and, you know, say, hey, we're, we're gonna be talking about the budget. Do you have questions about the budget? We're not creating a new event. We're just informing people at a event they're already at, right? I mean, these are what I am saying when I say organic. I'm not saying that board, that as a board, we don't have a plan and we're just, oh, hey, I'm Stephanie. No, we are sitting here, we have a schedule. Do we bring little pamphlets that say, this is what's upcoming? This is what you may need to know, you know? Are we greeting, um, parents at the, do they still do the transportation fair? You know, thi- things like this, where people are already gathering with their kids and not necessarily a booth, but we know this is the date of this event and we know what's on our calendar in that quarter. So maybe we focus and talk about these upcoming issues at these events. And I know that's a little bit more internal, but it's not more work. So this is not us adding anything to our schedule. This is us being strategic about, uh, the board being consistent in the information that we are putting out to the parents, right? So, am I making sense here? So we're all talking about the same topic. So they're like, oh yeah, I spoke, spoke to Director Marvin and she said that, you know, you guys have budgeting coming up and this is da-da-da-da-da. And I spoke to Director, you know, Karen. But it gives us consistency, which in turn gives us trust, right? Because they know that we're on one accord, they know that we're all discussing this. They're not going here getting one answer, going here getting another answer. And I think that helps bring people in, cause trust is a big thing. And if they think that there's disorder or chaos or confusion, people don't come. But if we as an internal group come up with a plan to engage the community, we may have success. But with a plan, I don't, I think whenever I say plan, people think I'm trying to tell them to plan new listening sessions. And no, I'm talking about utilizing what's already happening in the community so that we can engage with them. I said a lot of words.
Thank you. Um, to build on that, I think, um, there's all, uh, part of the planning, you know, I like to plan, um, is also to coordinate with the superintendent in the community engagement and feedback process that he does with his team in bringing us a recommendation. That there, that the community engagement is happening at the recommendation development level. And there can be additional community engagement prior to us making the decision. And there can be additional community engagement prior to us making the decision. But I like the idea of, I mean, we have the ABCD for a reason, right? We know what our big decisions are for a year. And the superintendent, you know, we got an email this week where the superintendent was talking about how they can make information available to board members about the district events on the district calendar more clearly so that we know when there are things like Director Marvin said, you know, go to a building, be at an event, be present, be there to, you know, answer questions. But I think, you know, in the past, the superintendent and the exec committee, especially around the referendum, we learned about a lot of these events that were happening in the community. But we also learned how hard it is to manage that calendar. And we don't really have somebody in the district right now in that role. So that would be some work, is, you know, putting together those events and then matching it to what we think might be the topics that might come up there. I love the idea of having a handout because I also know how I feel about handouts. But I also want us to keep in mind the coordination with some of these big decisions that are coming up and that there's engagement planned on the part of the superintendent and staff before they bring us the recommendation as well. So we don't want to be doing two things at once. We don't want to be out getting feedback before we've even seen, you know, the recommendation from the superintendent that he's asking us to consider. Director McClellan?
As you talk about that, I think that there's room that we can grow in. It may be things like talking points or pivot topics. So if we're talking to somebody about something that they're interested in, how do we pivot to then potentially get input from them on things that we're working on?
We start with their interests and then we try to direct them to the work that we're doing.
Or at least probe them, we have them there. We're giving them information, you know. Can we turn that and pivot that to getting potentially some information from them as well?
Director McWhorter?
Yeah, so to put the two things together with what we were just discussing on our self-evaluation is getting information out to the public. And oftentimes, the public doesn't know they need the information until they actually need to know the information. So we could provide, okay, here's a communication structure, you know? If you have a problem with your child at school, this is what you follow. You don't immediately jump to the school board. But they don't need to, they don't, maybe not. They might not know that until they're actually in that situation where they immediately jump to the school board because they've had no reason to have to know it earlier. Did that make sense?
Right.
And so I see that as a tension for how do we get them, how do we get the information out that we think would be helpful for them when they communicate with us? And maybe one thing we could do would be to say, what information do you need that would be helpful for you when you communicate with us?
Director Whitman?
I just, I thought that came to mind when you mentioned like scheduling the calendar. So Alan has that beam, I just looked, it's still up, it's still active and it has been. But it's called DMC Beam, where he puts all of the community activities that he's made aware of into one calendar. And if it's educational, if it's, you know, whatever, he's got it all highlighted. So he may be someone, grassroots organization, that we could partner with to have that information in one space. And not just for us as a board, but also, you know, for the community. It's nice to have a nice little central hub to go. So I think that, I know he does put RPS events on here as well. I've seen those over time, so it's just a matter of notification. But I think it's one of those things where we don't have to reinvent a will. If someone already has a system that's up and running, you know, maybe we just help promote that amongst the community and add, you know, whatever notable events to that. That could be a solution to the calendar.
Let's hold our, getting a little bit more into specifics. Let's work through the other two goals and then we can talk about how some of the conversation structures and objectives. Our second goal from last year was to establish a plan for board members to visit all school buildings, programs, and departments by the end of the 2024-25 school year. We modified that a little bit after we developed our skip visits, our monthly visits to the schools to talk about the skip visits and see skips in action. We did do one visit every month from October through May, and we covered elementary, middle, and high school. I think pretty uniformly, we heard great feedback from the people we were visiting. I think it proved Director Marvin's statement, how thrilled the teachers and the staff were to see us. I mean, we see the principals maybe most often because some of them might come and present. But to be able to walk into a classroom and spend some time interacting with the teachers and seeing the students, a lot of people commented they hadn't seen that for a while from board members. So I think that was an advantage. And there's, as I understand it, as we think forward to perhaps a goal for next year, I am hearing that it's something we might want to continue to do. And any other comments about the skip visits or what we should keep in mind for developing a goal for that for next year? Director Marvin?
I absolutely agree that that would be a really important goal to continue because not only, I think, does it validate the students and the staff that we see you, we know you're doing a great job, and we want to spend time here. But also, when we're talking to community members, especially those who don't have kids in school, you know, when we talk to them about the things that are happening in our schools, it's not just, well, I heard it. We've seen it. No, that firsthand visit, I think, is huge because you can see the faces of the kids, you can hear them, you can watch how our expert staff is interacting. And I think it gives real credibility to us when we're talking to the broader community, again, especially people who may not have kids in schools. This good stuff really is happening.
Well, I think one of the things that I've said a few times is that I wanted a drone hovering over my shoulder to take a drone's eye view of our visits because there were the small moments of just watching a table of three doing an activity that the teacher had just presented. We really got to see the wit and wisdom implementation happening. We learned new words about literacy, some board members liked more than others. But, and I think the skip process, we talk about it here at the table. It is very, it's very strategic. And even it takes a few times to sort of understand how all the components work together. But the principals that we visited did a great job of showing us their skip goals and then saying, and watch, watch how we're doing it. And for me, it really helped then when I came back to the next time we talked about a skip strategy or a component or what a goal was versus a strategy, really understanding what it means and that our buildings are getting, right? They're not just saying, oh, it's another, you know, binder on a table. They're actually buying into it and implementing it. So, yes, I would love to continue this next year. Anything else on the skip visit?
I just have a quick question. So, yeah, I think it's a great goal and glad that we met it. But since we've met it, I guess when I think goal, I think there's something new.
So is there something that could be moved over to a best practice? Something that we continue to measure so that we can create new goals to accomplish? Or is this, or do we want goals that we've already accomplished? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
I personally would like to see it as a goal because I don't think if we have it as a priority, especially as the skip process is changing, and that we may have to modify it depending on what we find out about open meeting laws. We may have to do it differently. So I personally like it as one of our priorities because I think it shows the community, we have a structured way of visiting our schools. Now, I don't mean to say that there aren't other goals that might be similar in terms of reaching out to the community that we can't add. But I personally would like to keep it as a goal.
Okay.
I think for myself as a school board member, it was really gratifying to see the words on the strategic plan actually being implemented and the results that we saw in student achievement. I think that's, I mean, I think that's really important because otherwise, it's just this high-level thing up here that we don't really know what's the result been. So I would certainly second this on having this to be a continuing goal that we may decide to do a little bit differently or, you know. It's one of those, I think it's one of those goals that you never meet.
Okay.
Because it's constantly a work in progress.
Continue to grow.
All right, anything else on goal two? And goal three, the board will research and consider options for updates to comments to the board policy and procedure. And that is in progress because the board will be getting detailed information related to policy 206 and procedure 206A before or at, before the August 5th meeting for discussion at the August 5th meeting and then subsequent meetings because, you know, it takes three meetings to look at our policies and procedures. But we've done some research. We presented that research to the policy committee, who came up with some recommendations as to how to enhance or improve comments to the board that we'll be bringing for discussion. So hopefully, that will be a goal Director Whitman we can check off and not have to do it again next year. All right, so given those three things, I sent out to the board ahead of time, and I believe it's also in Symbli, the structure of public participation. The chart I'm looking for right now, public participation spectrum. This struck me because, I don't want to say that I could have predicted a lot of the things that we brought up, but I think we've talked about them before. And I think we struggled with them in completing the listening sessions. We've seen how difficult it is to pull together events and places to attend when we were doing the referendum and even just scheduling our time. We tried the recap written, we tried the recap on video, and we didn't see very much uptake. And like Director Whitman said, we're putting things out there and maybe we're not getting the kind of feedback we want and we don't really know how we're even measuring it. So I was thinking that, not tonight, but perhaps we could consider as a goal related to this communication and engagement that we set aside some time, maybe at a future study session, or maybe it begins with a subgroup of the community engagement committee to think about what a plan might be, perhaps using the structure of inform, consult, involve, and collaborate. Because when I look at that example tools at the last row, it represents a lot of the things that we're talking about doing or that we already have in place, like fact sheets, could be a newsletter, but we already have a website. Well, how effective is our website? Is there, we've talked a little bit in the past about the possibility of using a page on our website to be a hub of our agenda items. So if there's a section on the website and there's a button you can push and you can access every, all the meetings where we've talked about the budget. So you don't have to go to Symbli and do a complicated search. But all of our budget discussions for the year are linked through, you know, one button on our website. That's, how can we use our website better? Open houses and public meetings and focus groups, public comment. We already have a lot of that, and we're talking about how to make it better. That's under the consult piece. Involve, workshops, deliberate or polling and study group. That, for me, is that piece of coordinating with the superintendent on upcoming recommendations. When is it right for the superintendent to do a focus group or a study group on an item that's coming to the board? And when is it right for us to do that kind of outreach? And then finally, collaborate, you know, the citizen advisory committees, we're going to be talking about those when we bring the policies to the board at the next meeting. There's some changes in some of the structures of those. But internally, having conversations about how to make CCIC better and some of our other advisory committees. And then, of course, the big one, the strategic planning that we're about to undertake. You know, how can we make sure that we're using all of these best practices? This was just the structure that helped me to think about all of the pieces. And I think for each one, we need to think about how we're going to measure how effective it is. Because I don't think we've done it. And I don't know if someone would say that our YouTube videos weren't successful because, you know, we only had so many views. Well, if we had YouTube videos and a newsletter, we combined those totals, is that an adequate amount of feedback we're getting or views that we're getting? That is what we're trying to accomplish. So I sent it to you ahead of time to think about and said that we would offer some thoughts tonight. So anybody have any thoughts? No thoughts is not good. Superintendent?
Well, you know, obviously, I leave the board's development, the board's goals to the board. And I really admire the fact that you have taken the community engagement piece in particular so seriously. And I think we would be glad to support the board in all of the steps you just shared. As I'm listening to the conversation, though, one thought occurs to me, and I took a quick, just like off the top of my head moment to write it down. In the years I've been here, very often, the board's goals have been about board process, which is what you're talking about and it makes sense. And I'm not suggesting that shouldn't be. But the goals for changing the system or schools have often been the board's goals for me. Like, we've expressed that in my goals, which is certainly important. But we haven't integrated them into the board's goals in most years. They've been work process goals for the board, and that's one way to do it. But I was thinking, well, what would an alternative approach, not alternative, an additional approach be? So if it wasn't just, here's our goals for how we work together as board members, but here's what the board is going to seek to achieve. And it won't surprise either of you. The two big ones that came to my mind are the skip process at the school level and the strategic plan process at the system level. And I just said, well, how would I write that? A goal for the board could be, guide the development of school continuous improvement plans for the 2026-2027 school year that include evidence-based goals and strategies for improving outcomes on the performance measures approved by the RPS school board in spring 2025. So if you get to the end of the year, you're saying, do we have plans in our school improvement plans that are evidence-based plans that are going to point our schools toward the performance measures you'd approved last spring? And then on the strategic plan, I thought, guide the development of a new strategic plan that utilizes stakeholder feedback, evidence, and research to neighbor Rochester Public Schools to make transformative progress toward achieving the new mission, vision, and values that the board will approve in the fall of 2025. You'd have to think about that and do it. And maybe that's not what we want by board goals. Because maybe the board goals are really, truly your work together. And the goals for the work of the system are the goals you approve for me or that are in the strategic plan. But it just occurred to me then that it would be a very different endeavor if at the end of the year, you all were saying, did we achieve goals like this? It would actually not be so much superintendent, did you achieve those goals? Now, obviously, my goals would need to be aligned with your goals. Like, if I had different goals, we're not going to get anywhere. But you'd be at the end of the year, and instead of reviewing goals like what we're looking at from last year, which were about like the skip visits and things like that, good goals for board process, you'd be saying, as a board, did we achieve this goal for the work that, like, we set as a goal for our board? It would be a very different way of thinking about how we've done it in some past years. And maybe just duplicative because we're already doing that through the goals that you're, you know, setting for me, putting in the strategic plan or improving. But it'd be like board taking ownership of some kind of a goal like that. But it'd be like board taking ownership of some kind of a goal like that.
Okay, so I looked at it and I, I'm listening. Again, I guess I struggle, right? Because I don't feel like it's not that we don't do these things again. The only new thing that I saw on this that I guess I hadn't considered was the citizen advisory committee. And I've been giving some thought into what that looks like, right? Like how do we, how would we enact that or how could we utilize that when we're looking at just involving? And then like to, to the superintendent, like how do we measure that? How will we be able to really successfully measure? Because I think if we measure it based on, did we do it? Did we send out fact sheets? Sure. Did we put a new link in the website for parent, you know, information? Sure. But how do we, how will we know that this is effective? As we've all said, it's not that we haven't done these things, but we're obviously not seeing, I mean, very visibly, not seeing the participation levels go up. Or at the one skip visit we were at, again, I'm bad with names, I'm bad with places, I'm, I am not a history teacher, where they said they had almost all of their parents at their one event, like how?
I think it was Elton Hills.
Yeah, it might have been Elton Hills. But how do we duplicate that? Like how do we get a little bit of that secret sauce? Like how do we get that, that participation up? I think there are some places that do it very successfully. I don't think this is a reinvent the wheel thing, I just think we need to maybe step back and say, this is not a space that we're great at and we, we need some better consult because we've tried all of what seems obvious, if that makes.
Well, and I think in setting the goals, for me, it's very easy for me to want to jump into that conversation about engagement across the district. But I, I think about, we have a family engagement team, each school is doing that work, it's part of our strategic plan, defining what we want the community to be engaged with relative to the board. And I think it's different for me, thinking about a cafeteria full of Elton Hills people having food, playing games and learning about other cultures, right? I don't, I don't know that that's the kind of engagement we're looking for with our board work. So that's why I like having the goals that are process, because I think we have to think carefully about what parts of the process we have the resources for as the board, because we have resources that we can work with from the superintendent, but we can't, you know, turn the whole ship of the, of the district to meeting our board goals as well. I just think about that trade-off. Dr. Cook, sorry.
Well, so I, I think the, the goals around community engagement and better communication with the community are things that we've, we've, we've tried a few different things, the videos, the summaries, the listening sessions. And I guess I, I think we're, not that there isn't an interest in the community in better understanding what the school board is doing and what it's up to in the nature of the decisions, but I, I just think we're, we're mostly creating a solution in one of a problem. It's, it's, I like the idea of having goals for the board that are centered on what we're doing at the board table. I guess I, especially with the listening sessions, and you know, we've certainly done a few of them, not as many in the past year, but I just always think, you know, this is all the type of conversations that we're all individually having continuously, because we were all elected, we know plenty of people and we're all very accessible. And what we're really charged with is maintaining those connections, maintaining those connections with the community, attending, you know, the back-to-school parade among a hundred other things and being on the sidelines at the soccer game and having conversations in the stand and being at the band concerts and all the, all the rest. And then letting that inform our judgment at the board table. And not always being like the vector for the most recent conversation that we had with whichever group. And I, I like the idea of a goal that is focused on really sound judgment at the board table. And so the couple that the superintendent recommended, I think, make a lot of sense to me. I wouldn't say that we need to get rid of the skip visits or the other things, but I, I think the primary purpose of all those things has always been, how does that make me inform my judgment at the board table to make those decisions? As opposed to like a way to signal community engagement or recognition to staff or something? You know, those are all kind of nice to haves, but the, the real purpose is giving the information that allows me to make a better decision on something coming up.
Do anyone else have any thoughts that might bring us closer to some goal language?
I like what he said, and I agree. And I don't, I don't think I agree exactly with what Director Cook said, but I do think there are some things we could do to just engage the community in some ways. Like we added, you know, the recognition of students, you know, we can add, you know, I mean, I just, I would like to see, I know that is what we are as public servants doing daily, but it would be nice to see the community more involved with the school. I think it lessens some of the burden, like all the work we had to do, all the work that everyone did for the referendum, I applaud you, but I think that if we have better community engagement when those things happen, that all the burden isn't going to be on the board because we have a better relationship with the community, if, if that makes, I don't know, maybe I'm going somewhere else.
I, I'm not sure what it was exactly that you just said, but somehow it prompted a thought that doesn't seem like it's connected.
That's what I do. It's my art.
One, one, one thought that just occurred that we, that would be measurable and is related to our, our work at the board table in the context of decisions. I, I think our relationship with the community and really our decision-making generally benefits a great deal when the rationale for decisions is very clearly articulated, because it, it just helps with transparency generally. But I think it also helps to ensure anyone who might be wondering about it, whether this board is a rubber stamp for every single recommendation that comes before it. And I don't think we are. But I, I think taking the time to very clearly explain, you know, and maybe we could define it, I don't know that we want to make this a goal, but some, I'm kind of workshopping here, in instances of disagreement with the, the district's recommended, or the superintendent's recommendation to clearly explain that in a, in a board meeting. Or...
Or instances of agreement.
Yeah, or, and I... I mean, you know, we could take it to an extreme, we don't want to do that for every item on the consent agenda, but...
Well, and I, I think about the, what you're talking about happens at board meetings. And I continue to struggle with how many people our decisions affect that will never watch a board meeting. It's just not their thing. Totally get it. Yet, we continue to hear about people not knowing about the decisions until later. And they're usually hearing from it from a source that isn't us. They're hearing from it from the media. We benefit from having people who do come to our meetings and follow decisions over time, but not all of those stories are available to the general public. And sometimes people just read a headline and, you know, don't get into the, to the detailed nuance of the, the conversation that we all had. And I still struggle about, you know, it, has somebody found that secret sauce of telling the community either beforehand what's coming up, which is what we tried to do with the ABCD, but I think what Dr. Whitehorn said, you read the ABCD sometimes, the language, you don't, you don't know what it is we're really talking about. Or that, you know, this decision might mean combining schools, right? Unless you actually paid attention to our conversation. So I, I want to give people the chance to provide input before we make decisions. And then I want people to understand the decisions that we've made and where to find out about what the implications are, you know, for their employment, their families, et cetera. So I, I still struggle with bringing what we do here out of this room and what's the right way to do that.
That, that is the question. And again, also so that we're not having these conversations that don't relate. Because this, this is why I say with the community, sometimes they're behind, so, or they don't understand, as she said, as Chair Nathan said, that, you know, that this decision will impact these following things, right? It says transportation, but what, what parts of transportation are we talking about? And when we do meet with the public, we can tell there's a disconnect because of exactly what everyone just said, that they're ranting about something else that we maybe even have already addressed. But that just goes to show that there's this disconnect in the, you know, in the, in the chain of communication. Even when I speak with people, they're two or three meetings behind of, you know, things that we've already maybe even voted on and decided, but they're still there because they never got the opportunity to express whatever it was that they wanted to express. Or what they're expressing, you know, would have been better if they had told, you know, told us when we were discussing it two months ago. I just, as Chair Nathan said, how do we, how do we fill that in so that we can be more effective as well when we're talking with the community?
Well, we're, we're not going to solve all this tonight.
No, we're not, not tonight.
Our goal is to try to identify at least some areas for our goals. Is that, is anybody interested in setting a goal to do, to do some research and develop a communication and engagement plan? Maybe research what some other districts are doing? Or pick, maybe it dovetails with what the superintendent suggested about focusing our goals around some of the big out, performance outcomes? Maybe we can target our communication plan around just like two big decisions that we're making in the upcoming year? As opposed to every little piece of information or decision that we make? And piloting it that way, just to see, you know, how our communication works? I mean, our communication, we can say is available, right? We have Symbli, we have the ABCD, we're on TV, YouTube, every meeting. So it's not that the information isn't available, but it's that, it's that poke, like the poking we did during the referendum, there's, we still haven't quite figured out that extra megaphone that we need for some of the information we're doing. And maybe it's more important for some of our upcoming decisions than others, right? Maybe we identify some of these upcoming decisions that we want to make sure happen and happen right. And we want to make sure that we're communicating and engaging the community on those decisions. As opposed to every single thing we do. Dr. Marv?
Well, I would be happy to work on something like that. And I think, you know, she said, maybe what we need to do is to determine what are going to be some, and Dr. McCall, as you were saying, some of the key issues that this district will be dealing with. And then see what the plan is to get that information in connection with the administration out to the public, knowing there are a whole lot of people who are going to hear it and not care, or hear it and not remember. I was a teacher for 40 years, I know how this works. It's not because, that's just the nature. You know, if it doesn't matter to me right now, I'm maybe not going to be paying too much attention. Right now, I'm worried about my kid's math grade. That's where my focus is. But if we can tie it to some key issues like the strategic plan and then go from there, here's some information and I want your feedback. Not just, I need you to know that, this, there's going to be a test, but here's some information, here's some different ways we can get it out, do the best we can, and then make sure we listen. And whether people get it the first time or have questions the second time, I think that's part of our job, is to listen and then provide that feedback to the administration. But I would be happy to work on that. Director?
Director McLaughlin?
I'm thinking about things like that too, things like newsletters, you know, if they're sent out by email, that kind of thing. I think that'd be helpful also to have any data that we can access related to clicks or that kind of thing, you know, who's opening them, who's not? Anything related to that, I think would inform us as to who we're reaching and about what.
Let's track them. And I think you mentioned the citizen advisory committees. I think we already have those in our policy. And it's part of the conversation that the policy committee is going to have at our August meeting, I think, to talk about how they might be able to be made more robust as Dr. Marvin said, not just information out, but feedback in and where they fit into some of the decisions we already make as a board.
And I do agree that this is a larger issue and I do, I, I do agree with us picking a topic or two topics and kind of using those as our lab to see how, how we get the best feedback back and, you know, maybe focusing and seeing how, you know, what, as, as Director McLaughlin said, if we, you know, our newsletter is getting us good responses, what, what is getting us those clicks or those responses? So maybe we can start to target our, for lack of better words, marketing in the direction, spend those dollars in a way that is actually effective. Even though we have all these different options, maybe we're spending money in spaces that are not, you know, we're not getting any, anything back.
I think we're hoping to do this.
Well, praise the Lord, I like that even better. Free is the best promise.
Okay, so one goal that I feel like we're coalescing around is to have a committee, and it could be the community engagement committee or a subcommittee, work on a targeted communication and engagement around some of our big issues that we are going to be making decisions on in the next school year. Does that sound like a draft that I can work with? Okay. A second one is to continue the skip visits. I think I've heard that's something we want to keep doing. Director Marvin spoke about us attending other school and district and community events, which I think we talk about doing that, but I know personally, there've been a lot of things that I've seen in the paper and I don't know that they're happening. But I know that Dr. Marvin knew about it because I saw her talk about it. And the superintendent has already offered to help us get access to the district events. But as I said, you know, internally we talked about it, we just don't have, the superintendent will help us if he, for example, gets invited to a community event or know, or knows about it. But if we're really talking about these other community events, I think we're going to have to do some concentrated effort to really find that so that all board members know about it ahead of time. We may also have to have a conversation about our budget, because some of those events are, there's a registration fee required or, you know, it might be a dinner or something. So we may have to talk about how, how to budget that.
I'd be willing to help with that.
Okay.
I get a lot of, lot of stuff filled with them.
Stephanie willing to help with that. Yeah, it covers my other thing is that I wanted to identify people. We'll just identify leads and then as we work through these goals, we can talk about ways for other people to get involved, how's that? And the last thing which we haven't talked about, but I did send it out ahead of time because we talked about it last year, was discussing options for our primary election in 2026. We had talked about this in the past and we have to, if we, if we are to choose to not have a primary election in an election year, we have to decide by April of 2026. And the last time we talked about it, we decided to just put it on hold because we didn't have an election coming up, so we thought, you know, let's just wait. But there was some conversation about, do we want to get community engagement on this topic? What kind of other information does the board need? Another factor that sort of entered into this is the legislature passed a law pushing the candidate application date up two weeks. So instead of it being, what is it, end of May, it's moved up. If we were to have a primary election, it would be moved up to earlier in May, through that first week of June. And then of course for the... And then, of course, for the, um, if we were to just do a general election, it would be mid, mid-July through August. So I don't know how, is it something that board members even want to explore? It would, at this point, we're not committing to anything. We're just committing to putting in the time to do some research about what the options are and what it would mean.
Okay, can you give me more info? I'm totally.
So right now, we have a primary and a general election. But we're one of very few school districts in the state that actually have a primary election. So if we weren't to have a primary election, it would be however many people sign up for each seat. So you, instead of having two, you could have three or four or five. We have not had that many candidates in a school board election recently, in, as long as I can remember. And then it would just be the largest vote total on Election Day in November. And we had talked in the past about the pros of that are, it's during a primary, a lot of the work is during the summer. Our primary audience for some of our votes, our parents, our families, our staff, are not engaged with school issues. It may be harder to get candidates, especially if they have kids that commit to, you know, summer. Whereas if, if all you had was one election, you could devote all your time, you know, to, you could start in the summer if you wanted to, but the actual candidate, um, application would happen in the fall for a November election.
So no one would fall out?
Right, it would just be the highest.
If seven people go for one seat, it wouldn't matter? Okay, all right, I'll move to you now.
Highest vote total per seat, right.
Director Marvin?
Well, I still don't understand our seat thing that we have. And I'm not sure that anybody does in particular. But it seems to me that if we're going to change the way people, um, are going to vote, that we should, I would feel a lot better if we'd survey our community and just say, pros and cons of having a primary. If we don't have a primary, we save money. But it's pros and cons, and tell us what you think.
Okay. I think one of the things that was confusing in, not this most recent election, but when, uh, the 2022 election was when three seats had primaries and the other seat did not have a primary, which was my seat, because there was only one opponent. And people would come up to me and say, why aren't you on this list? Why aren't you running? Why don't I see your name when I vote for you? And it's part of that whole confusion about the seats and you file for a seat and you vote for, you know, whoever you want.
If you only have two people register for the primary, it automatically goes to the general election.
Correct.
And any change in our seat structure? So primary to seat would require action by the legislature, so.
Director McLaughlin?
I have one more thing to add to the mix, so they haven't really thought all the way through, but it has occurred to me at times that, in some ways, in my mind, the answer to this question might be different if it's a presidential election or not. That it seems like the local landscape of the election process appears different when it's a presidential year versus a non-presidential year. So I think that, in my mind, complicates it a little bit.
Well, and, not necessarily saying we would want to do this, but it is a decision we can make for every election by April of that year. So if we tried it, and, you know, our turnout, for example, went down or something, you know, we can always make that decision for every election. You have the option.
And I, and I think that's the other thing with a primary, um, happening when it does, or having to file and then having the primary in August, is that, as you said, mentioned, Chair Nathan, that a lot of people, their radar isn't even on it yet, because kids aren't back in school, you know, for parents particularly. And the other thing is, is I think primaries can be very lopsided, because people who feel very intensely passionate about one side or the other make it a point to come out for the primary, and other people are just not paying attention. I mean, that's not our problem to solve, but I think, um, it might provide more, people might feel that they have more options if there aren't, if there isn't a primary, because then they could focus just on the general election and not have to be concerned about a primary.
Thank you for that, Dr. Workman, because I was thinking about something similar. Is that because we are a nonpartisan race, we don't designate ourselves as parties, we're not affiliated with a, a larger movement, narrowing it down to two candidates for a general election makes it look like a binary choice. But I think a lot of the issues that we face in our district don't always lend themselves to binary solutions. So to me, I agree with you, Director Workman, the more people in the mix of the conversation longer, the more ideas, I think, might be drawn through to Election Day in November, as opposed to either or. And I, and I think we've seen either or in, in a number of the recent elections, so. Without solving it tonight, is this a goal that we would like to put on to explore? And we can come back to the board with the plan?
I have one last question about it, though. So how would, that doesn't impact the other, it would just be the school board backing out, right? So whatever other primaries are, that there are, right? It just wouldn't be school board members, that's what it's called.
Okay.
Just double checking.
Yes, goals?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
All right. I'll probably watch this video five times and try to come up with some draft language and share it around, and then we'll have a conversation along with your notes. Thank you, and share it around on August 5.
Sorry, Chair Nathan, I'm, I'm looking back at the, the notes that you had sent around to, uh, help motivate this discussion. No, 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 but, uh, one of the things on the, on the first point, the first goal on community engagement and recognizing that the Community Engagement Committee is going to study that a little bit and, and maybe look at some recommendations for us. But one of the, one of the bullet points you highlighted was, um, improving or changing responsibilities of the community curriculum, Instruction and Advisory Committee, and perhaps other community engagement committees. That's something that, from a policy perspective, the board certainly could do. Evaluate whether there's additional ways to empower some of our advisory committees. And kind of to your point earlier, Director Marvin, that we really do need to take their advice in some meaningful way when we gather these people together to provide their input. And, um, I don't have a clear sense on what form that might take, but, um, but maybe there's something that we could do around the, the various community engagement and advisory committees that we have from a policy perspective, that the board could really take action on.
And I think that's on our policy committee agenda for August, so hopefully we'll have something to the board. All right, anything else on our goals? No? All right. I think Anna's going to put a slide up. Our next item is other business. Speaking of the ABCD, it's available in the agenda item. We have, our next regular meeting is August 5, where we'll have our focus topic, Graduation Rate Analysis and Overview of the Ninth Grade On-Track Initiative, a monitoring item on Staff Development Plan and Budget Review, and the Superintendent Evaluation for 2024-25 Leadership Component Report, tonight's, um, close session. Action on the Girls Hockey Co-op and the Approval of the 2025-26 Student Handbook. And then we will have another close session to further discuss the leadership component, um, Part Two of the information. Then on August 12, we have a retreat on our new strategic plan. Any other items board members would like to add?
Madam Chair, I'd like to respectfully request that we table my evaluation for tonight. We've been at this for more than three hours. And I've had a day that started at seven. And we've been dealing with, uh, issues of, uh, very specific, uh, concern. This is a high-stakes opportunity for me, and I think to conduct CEO evaluation at quarter to nine, after a meeting that's gone well more than three hours. So I'm, I'd be glad to work with the executive committee to reshape the timeline. I don't feel it's appropriate time for you to conduct my evaluation at this time.
Okay, here, here. So do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Has been moved and seconded to amend the agenda, to remove this, to table it, to table it to a later date. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Superintendent. So let's finish up with our upcoming dates. Our next meeting is August 5 from 4 to 6 p.m. Notice the time is different. Our retreat starts at 6 o'clock p.m. on August 12. And then we have a regular meeting on August 19 and September 9 at 5:30, and both of those are regular meetings. And hearing no other businesses, this meeting is adjourned at 8:50 p.m.
What's it mean you don't want to be your evaluation in the middle of the night?